Matt? Matt?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, hi. I didn't know if you sent a message or something. I'm sorry. How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Good, 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 good.
Matt, we have no audio over here.
I hear you, Walter.
Yeah, I can't hear anything going on in the meeting room.
Yeah, same here, everybody.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. There we go.
Everybody all right now?
Yeah, we're good.
You here now?
Yep, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our first public hearing.
Recording in progress.
We'll do a roll call first, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Present.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Mau?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Ms. Rado?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. The first public hearing has to do with an ordinance of the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year budget for Luzern County. This is due to the state facility closure transition program. Essentially what this is, is money that's coming from the state. Luzern County will act as a pass through. And it will go to the communities that were affected by the closure of retreat and the closure of the White Haven hospital facility. We're now open for members of the public who would like to comment in regards to the proposed ordinance. Once again, council is now open for members of the public to comment in regards to the proposed ordinance amended to two thousand twenty-year twenty-one fiscal year budget.
Mr. McGinley, if I could, as a public?
Yeah, one second until we see if there's anyone else in the public, Mr. Griffith, then no.
Okay.
Certainly can't get time. Anybody else from the public? If not, we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Griffith for three minutes.
Thank you. The only thing that, the only concern that I have is with the, obviously with the public meeting, is that we, the public doesn't know what the appropriation is of the 2.1 million. And I know Mr. Swett sent that out. And so at some point, maybe when we do the ordinance, I'll make an amendment to include those amounts in the ordinance. Because the public really doesn't know how much money we're giving to those several municipalities. And I think that would be information that the public should know and could comment appropriately if they had that information on the front end. So I appreciate the opportunity to address the council and let you know that.
Well, on the agenda submitted, Mr. Griffith, which is part of the packet for today, it lists 2.105823 dot eighty-six dollars as the amount of money. It also listed that the borough of Shurchenny, Newport Township, City of Nanticoop, Foster Township, and Plymouth Borough will be receiving, in addition, White Haven Borough and the sanitary authority of the Shurchenny, excuse me, will be receiving that money. So
That has been out on our webpage and it is part of our agenda packet for this meeting.
Yes, I understand that. I understand that, Mr. McGinley, but the problem is we haven't delineated how much each of those municipalities get. That's, I appreciate your input on it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Reading that the last line in the summary, it says subrecipient agreements have been executed between each of these entities in the county. Have those agreements actually been executed already?
Well, I don't think that's part of a public hearing, but I don't know the answer to that. Ms. Crokel, do you have an answer for that?
I will get that information. I'll get the, I'll get information to council.
Thank you.
If not, do we have a motion for adjournment? So, Mr. Perry, do we have a second? Mr. Dermott, all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, unheard, motion carries? We have another public hearing scheduled for 5:50, so we have five minutes before the scheduled time for the hearing.
Is it appropriate to ask a question about what was discussed or?
The public hearing is finished?
Which is like what Mr. Griffith, it's 2.1 million dollars.
Right.
Going through X and M municipalities.
Right.
Would there be a formula? I mean, it's not, I'm assuming it's not.
The state did the calculations and the allocations. We have, knowing a function that we serve is we're the pass through. So we're gonna receive 2.1 million and then we're gonna write checks to all those different people that I indicated. But the state set it up, the state allocated the money and that's the formula they came up with. I assume part of it's probably based on some population, but I probably should not make that assumption without note. Yeah, that's something that's been in the works because of the closure of retreat in White Haven.
Mr. McGinley? Just as a note, there was something sent out from Mr. Swett with those, those allocations this morning.
Yeah, it was.
So, I mean, it's, it's a matter of record what.
Oh, yeah, it's public knowledge.
Where?
Huh?
It's what's going, how much is going where?
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's there's no secret there. It's, I don't know it. I looked at that earlier today. I've memorized that stuff.
Right, no, but it's on, I mean, it was sent out.
Yeah. It's all through the state. They made that determination and made the calculations that are part of that.
Okay, it's now 5:50. We're gonna call the second public hearing to order. Again, we'll have a pledge of the moment of silence and then we'll have a roll call for that. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Mau?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Rado?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. The public hearing is regards to proposed ordinance authorizing a budget transfer from line item 125 dot 20 dot 4176 dot 599 dot 82, which is the American Rescue Plan Act to local transit matches. 100 dot 96, 4810 dot 590 dot 32 and match your funds to the County Reserve fund, which is 100 dot 99 dot 9490 dot 445 dot 10. And that would be the budget transfer for the local transit matches. The hearing is being held as a result of the fact that this ordinance was introduced at our last phoning session. So the order for us to have a final vote later this evening, we're required to have a public hearing on that. That's why it's on the agenda today and that's why we're asking for public comment on the proposed budget transfer. Any member of the public who would like to address counsel at this time in regards to the proposed ordinance?
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Rabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Rabo.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. With respect to the match to Hazelton Transit, a few months, actually back in July 12th, the council meeting in which the Hazelton mayor spoke with respect to the match and subsequently being cut out the 20,000, well over $20,000 that was cut out because of the Carbon and Scoopel County routes. I would like to remind counsel prior to the voting session that the history behind those two routes, I mentioned this a few years ago, was because Can Do at the time of the buildings of the warehouses, when the spur of the developments there with respect to the K O Zs was being bantered around and debated and then voted on, those routes came into being because of the fact that they, they needed those people that were living there at the time to be transported from Carbon and Scoopel County into those industri, into the Humboldt Industrial Park and Can Do requested, I believe, the county at the time, or Hazelton City. And Hazelton City then requested, or it was Can Do requested to, the county to allow for those, or for the city to include those routes. So therefore, I think that this should be the Hazel Township, as I said three months ago, Hazel Township and/or Can Do should be the ones that fund that $20,000. Or if there's going to be the ARCA money used, then they should have Carbon and Scoopel Counties' allocation of the ARCA funds coming to Luzern County. Not Luzern County paying for those two counties. And if the mayor was correct three months ago with respect to Luzern L C T A getting, you know, funding Lackawanna County routes, then they should, Lackawanna County's ARCA funds should go to fund those routes. I'm about fair, you know, calling a spade a spade, Mr. Chairman and members of council. There needs to be, the allocations that go for the routes that aren't Luzern County routes should be coming from their respective counties. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other members of the public? Any other members of the public?
Mr. McGinley, there's a question from a citizen.
Okay. In the chat box? Or question?
In the questions.
I don't have enough info like Walter was speaking about.
From the, the previous session.
There's not much I can do about that right now. We can incorporate it into the voting session if necessary. Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Present.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second.
Servant? All favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions, unheard, motion carries, thank you. And we'll be beginning the voting session at 6:01, so we have approximately five minutes at this time prior to that session.
Recording stopped.
Okay, it's 6:01. We're gonna call the session to order.
Recording in progress.
Again, a pledge to the flag followed by a moment of silence, please. My pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Mau?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Rado?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Gook, do you want to comment on the executive session that was held this evening at 5 o'clock?
Yes, council held an executive session via both Zoom and in person at 5:00 PM. Received a report from the Acton County Manager related to employment matters. No deliberations took place and no decisions were made.
Thank you. Recommendations and ceremonial proclamations, we have several retirements. Ruth A. Burns, who retired as a Court III with Children and Youth. John P. Conwell, Jr., a studio worker, Building C Grounds. Anna L. Habib, Assistant Administrator II in the Children and Youth Division. And Judith Newman, case worker supervisor, also in Children and Youth. We wish them happiness and health as they move forward from their severance in the county and into retirement. I think Ms. Newman, if I remember correctly, had forty-plus years of service with the county. Which is quite a number of years. Moving on, the deletions, number five will be deleted from the voting session based on an request from Hazelton City to delete it, so number five will be deleted. Going to number number six. Return to look up. We had added the pilot in regards to the apartment complex in Woodster that we had passed back in September. I added it because I wanted to make sure everybody knows that we received it and required a signature. And subsequent to that, there was a statement from Ms. Craig in case that it was not.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a statement from Ms. Craig that it was not what?
It was not necessary to be voted on because it had been passed back in September.
I believe that was when we spoke this afternoon. Yes, I believe that that was that was the case.
Okay. So that will not be part of the agenda this evening either. That in mind, we have a motion to adopt the voting session agenda.
Mr. Chairman? Chairman?
Yes, yes.
I'd like to request deletion of item number three.
I'd like to request one. Who was that? Mr. Hawes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a request to delete item number three because it's actually in error. The council, the original vote that was taken was to remove that law firm permanently from the list and I I went back and I researched the November 10th, 2021 minutes that council voted for that. And at 4727, Walter Griffith's original motion was said that they would not represent the county in the future. And you yourself as chair reiterated that at minute 5857. So I don't think that belongs on our agenda tonight. Because it was not, there was no limitation. It was a permanent removal.
Well, you certainly tell your opinion, Mr. Hawes. This is a request to the county manager. So
Not your main.
It certainly is something that we can either vote on or delete. It'll be at the behest of the council.
If that's the case, then somebody that prevailed in that wrote on the prevailing side needs to change their vote because that was council's will and it was a five-six vote. So
I was on the, maybe it was five-six. I think it was nine-one on the actual thing, but, okay.
Even so, but it's just so for the amendment there, that has to change. Somebody has to vote to change that.
That's fine.
I believe that's when it failed.
Was the first, first thing you stated was you want to delete it, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Mr. Hawes would like number three deleted. Do we have a second for Mr. Hawes?
Second.
Ms. Urban? On the question? If you vote yes, the number three item on the agenda will be deleted this evening. If you vote no, it will not be. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Mau?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three, yes, eight, no.
Okay, Mr. Hawes's motion. Okay, Mr. Haas's motion is defeated.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Mr. Griffin.
Could you tell me again why we're taking number five off the agenda?
Because Hazelton City requested that we take it off.
So they don't want their, they don't want their money, is that?
They don't want to go through the discussion.
So then they don't get any money then, their match doesn't happen at all then, right? Just to be clear on
Twenty thousand dollars. That was deleted by council several months ago when they made the request for the local match. That's what that refers to, Mr. Griffin.
So then what we adopted at a hundred and sixty-three thousand, that stands, right? We don't have to worry about
That's right. We're only talking about the differential of about twenty thousand dollars. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Snead to adopt the agenda.
Mr. McGinley, I have one more question. I asked you out if we need to declare a vacancy on the manager's search committee.
And it will be on next meeting.
Why isn't it on this one?
Because I think Ms. Hough sent it to me, I, well, first of all, I wasn't for personal reasons, I wasn't available till Monday. And that's the first time I saw that email and at that point it was a little bit too late. It will be on.
Do we make a motion to add it?
No, we can't, because we should have added, you know, prior to, twenty-four hours prior to the meeting.
Well, I think it's de minimis because it's just declaring a vacancy, it's not
I understand that.
It's not appointing.
I understand that, they don't have a meeting this week. They have a meeting next week after our meeting, so
But you won't be able to appoint anyone at the same meeting where the vacancy is declared.
That's correct, we have never done that, correct.
Well, you can't, so, right, but the point is now you won't have an appointment until the end of December.
No, it's not, no, we have several meetings coming up back to back to back.
Okay.
Voting. Not voting sessions.
Yeah, Mr. Griffin, yes, they will be voting sessions because the thirtieth, we have the budget amendment scheduled and we need to be able to vote, so there will be an advertisement for a special session and that will be the one where we will have that. And then the tenth seventh is a voting session and the fourteenth is a voting session.
Yeah, I think we can add that, I think we can add that to the agenda, I'd make that motion.
I am not going to entertain that motion unless Attorney DeLuca says that that's appropriate.
The Sunshine Act amendments are new, there's no real case law under the amendments. This is a very slippery slope, once you start adding things to the agenda that were not advertised to the public, that the public doesn't have an opportunity to speak on. I'm not prepared, as I sit here, to say that this is de minimis, especially since it involves one of our committees. You know, council could there's no real definition of, of circumstance that covers this one precisely. That's all I could say to you, there's no case law on it. The, the the section of the Sunshine Act that was amended is relatively new. I would not feel comfortable giving an opinion that this is de minimis.
Okay.
I second Mr. Griffin's motion.
Is that Mr. Haas?
I second Mr. Griffin's motion, which declare the vacancy.
Is that Mr. Haas?
Yes, Harry Haas, second it.
Thank you. You want to vote on it, we'll vote on it. I do think that we're violating the sunshine law, but it doesn't seem to bother anybody, so interesting. If you vote yes, you recommend that we put it on the agenda to accept the resignation. If you vote no, it does not go on the agenda. Roll call, please.
On the question, on the question, Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
It says, it's, I'm reading it, it says matters under which an agency may take official action, if not on the agency's agenda. And it says to address a de minimis matter that does not involve the expenditure of funds or entering into a contract or agreement. That's what it says.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm fine, go ahead.
You heard Mr. DeLuca say he doesn't want to provide an opinion on whether it's de minimis or not. Okay, you read the information? Like I said, if you vote yes, it will go on the agenda, if you vote no, it does not. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Excuse me, yes. Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sevan?
No.
Mr. Sheen?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Unbelievable, unbelievable.
Going back to adoption of the voting session agenda, Mr. Snead made the motion, do we have a second? Ms. McDermott? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. In opposition?
No.
No.
Okay. Two noted, please.
No, Harry Haas.
Your public comment on voting session agenda items are now open for members of the public to speak to council regards to anything is on the agenda.
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Raabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raabo.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley, with regards to number five on the agenda.
Number five is not on the agenda anymore, Mr. Raabo.
All right, excuse me, number three, then. Number three on the agenda with regards to the law firm that caused the calamity with respect to last year's election with that, with that you know, with that orchestrated publicity stunt using the county taxpayers' dollars in order to cause a problem with, you know, mail-in ballots and stuff with the mail-in ballot situation. I would like to know from you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of council if they, if there was an assurance given and also from the county, acting county manager, if there was an assurance by the law firm that they would not perpetrate such a stunt like that again. I mean, I would only be fair to ask that of them, considering that they went out of their way to do it under the auspices of representing Loseran County with, you know, in other cases, and they just decided to go on their lonesome and become a rogue firm to try to enact a political stunt. So I think that it would only be fair to ask that law firm if they would, if there's an assurance that they would never perpetrate a stunt like that again, using Loseran County and the taxpayers' dollars to do such a stunt. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Other members of the public, please.
Hi, it's Beth Hartman, Elizabeth Hartman, County County. Hi, I'm not sure what number agenda items are, and I'm sorry, but my sister passed away. So I've had a very rough week and
Sorry to hear that, Ms. Hartman.
Thank you, thank you. But the last item on the agenda that we were just, you guys were just talking about, I just turned it on so I could listen and catch myself back up. Um, that was just voted on, what, what, I know what the result of it was, what was the question asked? Could someone repeat that for me? So the last
The last item that was voted on prior to getting into the agenda, the manager's search committee, one member had submitted an email indicating that he was withdrawing from the committee.
No.
And the motion was to accept.
Yeah, no.
That was the last thing that was voted on.
That was just voted, that got turned down, yes is meant that we went forward on something and no is not, and I think I heard Harry Haas said, you're kidding me, or maybe Walter said, you're kidding me, the way the last vote went.
Well, there was also a vote on the law firm.
Yep, I heard that one, I heard that one. Right, I tried to speak then and no one saw my comment, but what I agreed on that was that we need the breakdown and then someone said it's on the website, I'll look rather than wasting your time on that, so that one question was answered.
On the
Now I'm looking for
Ms. Hartman, if it, the breakdown was in regards to the closure money from the state for the boroughs and the sewer authority because of the closing of retreat in Whitehaven. And yes, that is on the webpage.
I think it was, I think it was to take something off the agenda tonight. Or put something on the agenda tonight, and we needed Mr. DeLuca's input, and he said he didn't want to be involved, that's what I'm talking about. What was that question?
In regards to adding, Mr. DeLuca spoke in regards to adding a item to the agenda in regards to the sunshine law as it's currently stated.
Right, and, and what, then you guys voted, I'm sorry, council voted.
That's correct.
And what was that question? I want to know the wording of that question is just my question, I can't remember how it was worded.
Was, and I think I said this already, but Ms. Hartman, the question was, there's a member of the manager's search committee who submitted an email indicating that he would have to withdraw from the committee. And the question was
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I apologize, I apologize.
No, that's no problem.
I apologize completely, my brain is not here, I just buried her on Friday, my oldest sister, and I'm the baby, so, but I'll be listening, thank you, and
Sorry about that, I saw that in the newspaper and
Everything, everything is fine.
Very difficult for your family.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other members of the public? Moving on. Motion to approve the amendments from the November ninth meeting. Ms. McDermott, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hough? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. In opposition, any extensions, none heard, motion carries.
No.
Okay. No, Mr. Griffin is a no?
No.
Usually Mr. Urban is a no, yes, he is, okay, very good. Nothing on their own business, down to the first agenda item, which was the public hearing in regards to the state facility closure transition program, which we had a little earlier this evening, this ordinance was introduced at our last meeting, so do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Present.
Mr. Snead? Do we have a second? Ms. McDermott? On the question?
Question, Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
I would like to, I would like to amend the ordinance to include the facility closure grant breakdown for the six municipalities that are included in the state facility closure transition program funding. So that is included as part of the ordinance. Rather than just a total number of two point one million. I want to include the breakdown for, in that ordinance. So there's no ambiguity and there's no question is who gets how much money.
Well, it is municipality, but I believe there's also sewer authority, do you want to include them?
Yes, I said the list of the facility closure grant that was provided that outlines the amount of money that's given to each of the, each of the each of the facilities that's listed on that state facility closure grant. That's what I want, I want to include the list.
Okay. Now, just to clarify, that's municipalities and the sewer authority for
Right, and I, and I will, and I will read into the, for the public's edification how that was determined, because there was a question on that. It said attached to a D C E D contract and allocation dollars. The former county manager discussed the allocation dollars with D C E D this spring prior to the contract. I was told they were allocated based on the estimated cost of the project. Both the contract and projected expenditure cost spreadsheets are attached. So I just want to, because there's some question about how is that dollar amount determined for those different facilities? So I wanted to put that into the record so that people know how that was determined.
Mr. Griffin, you made the motion, do we have a second for Mr. Griffin?
Second.
Ms. Hough? Everyone understand the amendment as proposed? Mr. Griffin would like to include the breakdown for each of the municipalities and the sewer authority that's identified and the information in regards to the monies that will be distributed under this closure act. If you vote yes, we include the breakdown, if you vote no, it is not included. Roll call.
Ms. Hough?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sevan?
No.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
And yes, one no.
Okay. And Mr. Snead with that? Excuse me, one second. Mr. Snead with that amendment and Ms. McDermott with a second, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Griffin.
And on the question also, I'd like to know if Mr. Swett or Acting Manager Prokomo could enlighten us as to how they determined? I mean, it says here it was based on the estimated cost of the projects. What were the projects? That they, if they have any knowledge of what those projects are, because the numbers look pretty standard. I thought the numbers were supposed to be based on how much money they lost due to retreat closing. And, and the numbers look pretty much the same, except for Plymouth Borough, who took a twenty, only got twenty thousand dollars. Everybody else got six digits. So I would like to know what the, what, if they have any knowledge as to how that number was determined.
Mr. Griffin, I don't, I know the grants writer had worked with the manager. As I send the email, I had, you know, no day-to-day inclusion in this process.
We'll get you, Councilman Griffin, I'll get you a written breakdown on the determination of each you know, each item.
Very good, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Okay. Mr. Urban?
Yeah, so, you know, the other question is, the underlying question is, subrecipient agreements have been executed between each of these entities in the county. Were these actually already signed off on? And is this just a formality at this point? After the fact, you know, I'm looking through the contract, we are, I guess, the responsible for dispersing of the money, but is this money going to actually be given to us upfront? Or is this a state reimbursement where we're just, we are the pass-through? But it looks like, you know, we have some obligations in order to pass this money along. You know, I guess we have, we have to set the guidelines for them to be able to get the money and then it looks like it's actually reimbursed by the Commonwealth, so are we fronting the two point one million? Or is this going to be front-loaded by the actual Commonwealth?
Well, I think the first question is, do we have a contract?
I will get, I will get you the information. This, the grant writer worked with a previous county manager on these, so I will get you all the information if the agreements were executed and how the monies were determined.
I mean, it just looks bad that we're voting on something if agreements are already executed, I mean, this is just a formality that we need to be put through. Because you're getting the money, but you had no input from council prior to all of this transpiring. I mean, because you look at some of the legal language in the actual agreement you know, it, the state could actually come in if we don't follow certain guidelines, take the money back, and who's going to be stuck holding the bag?
Well, until we get a contract, I think those are questions that can't
Well, then I think we should make a motion to actually postpone this ordinance.
You making that motion, Mr. Urban?
Yes, till we get all
If I
Do you have a second?
We're just asking
One, one second, do we have a second to postpone? Very none, motion fails, go ahead, Ms. Prokomo.
Really, we're just asking that if you placed and added to the county budget. My understanding right now is that no contracts were executed yet.
Okay.
That's in the summary that we're given, so there's
And we were, we were, we're a pass, we're a pass-through.
Okay.
But it does say subrecipient agreements have been executed between each of these entities and the county, not the Commonwealth, the county. Loseran County is county.
I think you made a point there, Mr. Urban, and as you heard, there's no contract signed at this point, so I think some of those questions could be answered with the contract.
Yeah, you vote on it.
Yep.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Mr. Griffin.
Just, just in case some council members don't know, we did get the two point one million already. I think Mr. Swett told us that a couple meetings ago, it might have slipped through everybody's memory because so much going on, but we did get the two point one million, it's just a matter of, you know, now we're being a pass-through to allocate it to those entities. But we did get the 2.1 million. It's just a matter of, you know, now we're being a pass-through that allocated to those entities that have already, uh, been designated to get that appropriation. So, uh, we did get the money already, because I know that was one of Mr. Urban's concerns, is did we get the money already? Yes, we did.
Yes, it was. It was one of his concerns he brought up, and it's good to know that the money is already here. Thank you.
Yeah, his language doesn't state that in the actual contract.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes. Thank you. Moving down to number two, motion approved the county manager, L C T A letter of endorsement. Do we have a motion?
Present.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry, on the question?
The question?
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. McGinnley, on the question, there's a, there's a concern about the, um, the language that's in that letter that says that, uh, it says it's the intent of the Loser County Council to address this issue after the new year, when the new council is seated. That language, I don't believe, is accurate. Uh, and so therefore, I don't believe this letter should be accepted by council. This council has to make a vote in order for, we all saw the letter that came from the, uh, from Pendot today, from the acting county manager, and it clearly states they need a commitment from this council or this county that says we're going to support the $750,000 in order for them to, uh, proceed forward with their contract. And if we don't give them the assurance, either by vote, and I, I would certainly think this should be by resolution, not by a letter, uh, that we are supporting a $750,000, uh, match for their, uh, oper- for, for them building the new facility. This letter does not address that. And when I spoke to Mr. Fume about this the other day, I said, I don't think Pendot is going to look favorable on a letter that hasn't been voted on. It says that next year, the new council will, will vote on whether you're going to get the money or not. And that's basically what this letter says. This letter says the next council will decide if they get the money or not. We're just voting on a letter that says we're going to support it. That doesn't mean the next council is going to have to approve it. So as I said to Mr. Fume from L C T A, what are you going to do next year when the new council that comes in says no to giving you $750,000 as matching funds? Say, well, the other council said it was okay. That doesn't, it doesn't work. So I have a real issue with the fact that, first of all, the acting county manager is making the determination for council that we are not going to vote on this. I don't think that's appropriate. We can vote on anything we want until December 31st. And that's, that's council's prerogative to do that. We are not a lame duck council on every matter. So I, I feel that that letter should not be accepted. We should actually be doing a resolution of authorizing the money, if, if that's the desire of council, not, not approving a letter, because if this letter is binding, so would a vote on the money. Thank you.
If I may, uh, that letter and, that letter and the contents, uh, were given to me, uh, by, uh, either, uh, the L C T A and/or Pendot. Uh, I do have, uh, Mr. Fume, uh, on, uh, to answer any questions. My understanding, when I distribute the letter, was at this point, because bids are out and, uh, the, uh, process is proceeding, that if it gets, uh, postponed, there will be an increased, uh, cost, which means there will be an increased cost, uh, for the match. Uh, the letter was not binding, uh, uh, any monies, uh, but simply, uh, a letter, uh, offering support. But I have Mr. Fume, uh, on the, uh, call, and, um, I ask him to answer any questions. Uh, and if, uh, he determines a resolution is the best route, that's fine with me. Mr. Fume?
Mr. Fume, I don't know if you're muted or not, but, uh, you have the podium. Mr. Fume, are you on, please? I don't see his icon, but, no.
Uh, can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. So, so the bottom line is this, um, Pendot needs a commitment that the county will provide $750,000 in local match for this project, uh, for, in order for us to move on. It's a $60 million project, so you're basically getting a $60 million building for $750,000. My conversation today with Pendot is, they need the commitment before we move on. If, if we do not have that commitment from the county that they will provide this match down the road. Now, obviously, it's not a check now, but it's, it's months away that we'll start needing the money. Into next year, the project is stalled. So, uh, January 5th is the deadline for us to award the contracts to the bidders. If, if we do not do that by January 5th, then we have to rebid, and obviously, the cost of the project's going to go up, which means the cost of local match the county would need to give us is going to go up. So the best thing that could happen is the council, uh, vote on committing $750,000 to this project. So we can continue to move on. Uh, now, we're looking for other funds, so the 750 at the end, down the road a year or so from now, may not be 750. It may be less, but the amount of 750 would be the most that would be needed. So without a commitment letter, and I know the letter came from Pendot today, without commitment letters, or commitments saying that the county will provide that 750, uh, we don't move, the project stalls.
Mr. Fume, did you-
And if it stalls till January- Yes.
Did you request, uh, uh, and advise, uh, that I, uh, draft that letter and submit it to council? I want, I want to be clear to council that, uh-
Right, uh, uh, right, exactly. So when, uh, you had told me that this was, we're not going to be voted on last meeting, we thought if we could just get a letter saying that you would support the project and vote on it, uh, commit it later, uh, would work, but obviously, but now Pendot's saying, no, they need the commitment right away, that it's, it's definitely committed and not just support it. But yes, you're correct.
So what is the status of this letter then, Mr. Fume? Does this mean you what you need, or is this something that we still need to have some other type of, uh,
But, but we, well, according to, according to Pendot, they need something from the county committing the $750,000, saying that it's, the county is going to give us $750,000 if needed for this project. As I said, it could end up being less, but the most will be at least 750. It can't be a letter saying that. Now, it cannot be a letter saying that you're going to vote on it in January, because then the bids run out. And then we're going to rebid and the costs are going to go up.
So I think we're to say- This is veto.
Yes, go ahead.
If you're planning to vote on anything other than what's on the agenda, um, you can't, so.
I, I agree with that. I agree with that. I don't plan to vote on anything that's not on the agenda, but I, what I would say, it sounds to me like, Mr. Fume, that this letter is not enough for you, uh, for the commitment that the Pendot is looking for. Am I correct in that assumption, or?
You're, you're correct. You're correct. It has to be a commitment of the funds, as Mr. Griffith said.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to table this item and, uh-
You making a motion?
Yep.
Okay.
And, uh, um, draft a resolution for, uh, the next voting session to commit that money.
That's fine. We have a motion by Ms. Howe to table and proceed to get a resolution ready so that we can vote on that resolution in our next voting session, correct?
That's right.
Do we have a second from Ms. Howe?
Second.
Mr. Perry? You vote yes, we table the item. You vote no, we move forward to vote on this.
So, Mr. Chairman, that vote would be taken on November 30th.
30th.
As you said. Mr. Fume, you have no problem with that?
No, if it's taken November 30th, that'll be fine.
We, we actually have till January the 5th, correct?
January the 5th is when the bid expires, we have to rebid. But the, but, but the longer we wait, the, the, the project stalls, it, it's held up until, we don't move doing anything until then.
Okay.
One, one other question.
Go ahead.
In relation to the 750, uh, Mr. Griffith, uh, brought up the question of the new council came in and did not want to give you the 750. That means $60 million is gone, because the project doesn't go forward. Is that correct?
Correct. If, if we do not have the local match, the project does not move forward.
Correct. I was told that by Robert Short, that was the head of transportation, and me and Mr. Perry had the groundbreaking up in Hazelton for the intermold, that if it wasn't for the $300,000 that the county gave in, the project doesn't go anywhere. So, $300,000 from us produced a $30 million building. Here, 750 produces a $70 million building.
60 some million.
60 million.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, Mr. McGinnley?
The table, excuse me, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and to, to Mr. Snee's point, that's why I thought it was imperative that this council act, uh, before the new council, because it will stall the project, and obviously, they'll have to go out for bid again, and it'll cost more money for the project. So it's imperative that this council make that decision, not the pri- the next one. They can, they could do whatever they wish when they take office, but clearly, I think they're under, we're under the gun to get this taken care of for Mr. Fume and L C T A.
We'll have that ready for next meeting, which is next Tuesday. We have a motion table by Ms. Howe, second by Mr. Perry. If you vote yes, we table. If you vote no, we go back to the vote. Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes. Okay, table.
Mr. McGinnley, if I could have a minute? Uh, could I ask, could I ask Mr. Fume if he could send an email to council and letting us know what other sources of revenue he's reaching out to? He made the statement that it may not be 750, it may be less, which I certainly would appreciate that as, as we move forward. But obviously, he has intentions of looking elsewhere for some substant- maybe additional funding that would lower that 750. So if he could send us an email and let us know what his plans are, or if he has anything that he could allude to as to why, or how we're going to get additional money, that the county won't be responsible for as much, that would be helpful for me.
Well, I think, uh, in one of the articles I read somewhere along the line, I think Wilkes-Barre City has, uh, a request in for some LSA monies for the Transportation Authority. And I'm not sure, but others, Mr. Fume, if you would, uh, if you have, uh,
I'll provide-
Chance to do that, appreciate that.
I, I will take care of that.
Very good.
Thank you, everyone. Okay.
Down to number three, motion approved the county manager request to add the law firm of Joyce, Palmeri, and Moran, B C, to Loser County's approved panel of law firms, providing insurance defense services. Do we have a motion? Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman? Do we have a second from Ms. Sedman? Second from Ms. Sedman.
Second, Ken.
Thank you. On the question?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I was one of the six that voted the amendment to, to actually, uh, actually stop the, uh, firm from working for us. Uh, I didn't realize this for, for infinitum. Uh, but I was highly disturbed at that time what took place, and I voted accordingly. Uh, but I believe we made some changes, uh, in our policy moving forward. Is that correct, this attorney Prokomo?
I know that, uh, I reached out to, uh, uh, outside counsel in various, uh, litigation that, uh, uh, they would, uh, advise us, uh, if they were filing anything that was, um, not in the ordinary course of, uh, litigation, such as motions for prelimi- uh, preliminary objections, motions for summary judgments, uh, things like that. Uh, I have spoken, uh, with, uh, Attorney Moran. He understands, uh, completely, uh, that, uh, he or any member of his firm, uh, will not file any motions, uh, other than these rather technical, uh, ordinary motions, such as preliminary objections, or judgment on the pleadings, uh, in any action.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Go ahead, Ms. Ross.
You know, I appreciate Mr. Perry and, and looking at the policy, and obviously, we want the best policy, we want to learn from our past mistakes. But recall the discussion. That issue was so much more than just erroneous policy. There were duplicitous answers given to this council. There were half-truths. We had, not have answers to our questions. There were politics being played. I think there was a conflict of interest, because the, the, this particular attorney was at a, at a, at a Joe Biden event, at a fundraiser. It went against the will of council. We, this is a horrible mistake. This shouldn't be on the agenda, because the council voted permanently to strike this firm from the list for playing politics and messing with the people's trust. Go back and listen again to that discussion from November 10th. And again, this does us no favors with the public, who's trusting us to do the right thing, and to take a stand, say no. No to the games, because we see it in all levels of government. It's getting worse every week. Something else happens. Counsel, please, think about what you're doing with this, because the public is extremely upset and getting more upset with every bad decision we make. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Question, Mr. McGinnley, it's Sheila.
Yes, Ms. Sedman.
What was the vote last time? Six, five on this?
I believe so.
Okay, so, Harry, it doesn't look like it was an overwhelming vote of council. I know, I personally did not agree with council on this, because I think that, you know, we have a certain amount of trust in our law firms. I think they were advocating on our part. We may have disagreed with the way they went, and maybe felt that that should come forward to us, but I did not feel they did anything wrong in terms of political, uh, because someone was at a, uh, Biden affair, doesn't mean they should be conflicted out. I'm sure there are many people that, you know, some of, some people might think, well, they were in a, a Republican, uh, party, uh, or, or, uh, so- something fundraiser, and that wouldn't cancel them out. I mean, I think that we're making politics that divisive, and we're making things that, you know, somebody should be punished, or that was the vote of council, but ad infinitum. I, I just, I just don't think that would work for any of us, and it shouldn't work for this particular, uh, issue.
Mr. McGinnley?
Mr. Urban?
Uh, I have a legal question for, from the solicitor. Uh, Sheila, you actually made the motion, but you were not on the prevailing side at the time. So should the, the motion actually come from some member that's on the prevailing side, uh, Mr. DeLuca?
Uh, the motion actually passed. This is a resolution of council. I, I believe the rule you're speaking about
Pass.
Is when it fails.
So we could just, it's the same topic?
Yeah.
But?
You, you vote on the same topics all the time.
So wouldn't this be better served if it was a resolution to just terminate the other resolution, if there was a resolution number?
I don't think there was a resolution. I thought it was just a motion.
Okay. What is your question, Mr. Urban?
It, was there an actual official resolution number back in 2020, or was this just a motion that was passed?
I don't know. You have me at a loss. That's why we have the agendas set out in advance, so we could make sure if there's any questions council has about these, we could address them, pull whatever data we have to pull to have-
we could address them, pull whatever data we have to pull to have ready, and be able to answer that. I don't have it in front of me. I have no idea.
I think that was a motion made and added to the agenda that evening, Mr. DeLuca. Okay.
Like to make a motion to table this.
Motion to table by Mr. Urban. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Walter.
Mr. Griffin. Roll call. If you vote to table, the motion is table. If you vote to not table, we go back to the vote on the motion at hand. Yes means you table, no means you go back to the vote and the agenda item. Roll call.
Ms. Rado.
Yes.
Ms. Seddon.
Mr. Mr. McGinley, did you say no means it's not tabled? We vote on it.
That's right. Yes means it's tabled, which means we don't. It comes off the agenda for this evening. No means it's not tabled, and we go back to the vote.
No.
Mr. Snee.
Yes, because I need more information from what was on, what was actually said that night. So I'm voting yes to table.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Vog.
No.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Haas.
Listen to the tape. Yes.
Ms. Hop.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
No.
Ms. McGinley.
No.
Ms. Seddon, yes, one.
Motion to table passes. We move on to the next agenda item. Number four, motion adopt the ordinance, authorize a account and budget transfer from my item. One twenty-five dot twenty dot forty-one seventy-six dot five ninety-nine dot eighty-two. American Rescue Plan Act to local transit maxes. One hundred dot ninety-six dot forty-eight ten dot five ninety dot thirty-two, and match you funds to the County Reserve Fund. One hundred dot ninety-nine dot ninety-four ninety dot four-four-five dot one zero. Do we have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So move, Mr. Chairman, Harry Haas.
Mr. Haas. Do we have a second for Mr. Haas? Second. Ms. Urban. On the question.
If I could, Mr. Chair, since I'm introducing it.
Go ahead.
Since I made the motion, and council, you know, some of us have been doing this for a long time. To make county government work and local government work, where we really have to leverage our federal and state funds. So obviously, this is a very acceptable use. If you read the interim interim final rule, it's an acceptable use. Councilman Savin and Councilman Griffith were with me at C cap this past summer, where other counties were using this, and it was deemed a very appropriate use. And again, if you just read the rule, you will find that such. And again, this will save Luzerne County taxpayers eight hundred thousand dollars in this year. And then ideally, it would be great to see it next year, but we're just looking to transfer this year. We can return this eight hundred thousand to the to the reserve account. For those of you who are really nervous about using funds, even though it's an acceptable use, the funds aren't going anywhere. They're going to be in the reserve account. So there's there's no way that that we would be without any recourse. So I encourage everybody to really search their conscience here and vote to save our taxpayers eight hundred thousand dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Other members? I just have one comment. It's a very poor budget procedure to include one-time monies into the budget. In this particular case, the American Rescue Plan funds are one-time monies, and to use those in the budget is going to create deficits down the road. Just you can't comment now.
That's I was going to ask, can I ask a question about this?
No.
No, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Vote yes, we adopt the ordinance as presented. You vote no, the ordinance is not adopted. Roll call.
Ms. Seddon. Ms. Seddon.
Let your screen through.
Mr. Snee.
Ms. Seddon, you are muted. Ms. Seddon, you're muted. Mr. Snee, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Vog.
No.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Haas.
Yes.
Ms. Hop.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott. Mr. Perry.
No.
Ms. Rado.
No.
Ms. Seddon.
Ms. Savin. Ms. Seddon.
Her screen looks frozen.
What's that?
Her screen looks frozen.
That's her screen up there? Okay.
Yeah, it's frozen.
I don't know. Ms. Savin. Ms. Savin, I don't know if you can hear us even. Mr. DeLuca, what do we do?
Well, she trying to connect?
It looks like her screen is frozen, from what we can see here in the council room.
Well, I mean, you could give her a minute to try to just reconnect. I mean, when I got thrown off, I'm able to reconnect.
Well, I will quickly.
I checked, started.
Okay. You did?
Frozen.
Steve, any ideas that she could, well, she can call in.
Yeah, she can call in. If she's on the computer, reboot her computer or something. Or if she's on her tablet, restart it.
She can copy five.
She didn't respond to anything.
What's what's the vote currently?
Five yes, four no. Mr. McGinley needs to vote, and Ms. Seddon needs to vote.
And Ms. Seddon just sent me a text message saying no, but she need Ms. Savin, you need to call in and voice that. What's the number that she could call? You can she can call my phone. Ms. Savin. We're voting on number four.
If I can make a comment, it's only because we made a decision before.
Okay.
The final rule.
Okay. What's your vote?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Five yes, six no.
Okay. Motion fails. Our five is deleted. We have public comment. Can I have a token, please?
Cindy Brennan, Mountain Top. Good evening, council representatives. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm sharing a book this evening with each of you of photographic evidence from just a small fraction of dangerous roads within our county. These pictures should be embarrassing and shameful to our council and any other decision makers in our county. This book is yours to keep, and extra copies will be shared with the new council members coming in two thousand twenty-two. These pictures are telling. No one should break a frame of their truck traveling their road home because of the road's condition. Included in your book are examples of others who have lost tires, which can force tough decisions on residents when towing and repair costs come unexpectedly. I am now notifying council, current and future, of the conditions of our roads. We, as a county, are now liable for these conditions and any injuries caused by them. In two thousand twenty, a law was changed that affords our county three million dollars from the top of the LSA grant monies before other legislators convene to decide how the remaining funds will be divided based on application and need. That gives us the first three million of the five we are requesting to newly pave a minimum of ten miles, no less, of our roads in two thousand twenty-two. Mr. McGinley promised us an amendment to the budget for one million. We do expect that amendment, and we also expect that it will easily pass within this council. We are now at four million. The remaining million needed should also be easily found. The COVID relief revenue of fifty-six million, half of the total, was already given to the county in June. After looking at the stipulations by our Treasury Department, these funds may be used to recover from the pandemic, create jobs, repair interrupted care, et cetera. In my opinion, roads would certainly fall into those categories. Create jobs with competitive salaries and benefits, restart paused roadwork, et cetera. In my very first conversation with Mr. O'Neil, he was hopeful for two million of these funds. If attained, we would now have more than five. There have been reports of funds already allocated to projects. New positions and the hiring of outside consulting firms have also been suggested. Hire a consulting firm to evaluate our roads, and the focus will become very clear. This council will look very different in a couple of months. We will begin a new chapter. Before that happens, we need this council to lay the foundation of expectations going forward. We need our county manager to understand that our roads and our safety must be a top priority. We need our county manager to carefully review each and every position hired or current for our county, and make sure the position is necessary, and the person holding it is competent, productive, and can produce evidence of success within his or her role. We will be watching your actions closely on December fifteen. Please show us that you realize your obligation to safety, and that you will be taking the first steps towards fixing our roads properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Mr. McGinley, this is this is Mark Raybo.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. I would like to bring up, first of all, as a member of the Redevelopment Authority Board, we passed our budget. I would like to inform council, we passed our budget on November sixteenth on last Tuesday. And in our budget that was approved shows that there's a sale of the Ashley rail yards for three hundred thousand dollars. Now, that's a tentative amount, which is going to be, you know, ascertained once the once the final amount is, you know, agreed to. But that is all that is revenue that is going to Luzerne County because of the loan that was for the I'm getting feedback, hold on. Because of excuse me, there's feedback going on. In terms of the ship, in terms of the rail yards for that was given for the commissioners back in when the rail was purchased by the Redevelopment Authority. Also, there is Jenkins Township Tiff that has expired in two thousand seventeen, Mr. Chairman. And I think you'd want, acting county manager and Mr. Swett should ask Treasurer Beers or the Jenkins Township Tax Collector to find out if the taxes that are collected are actually coming back to the county, or they're going somewhere else, because the Redevelopment Authority is no longer collecting on that that tax increment for the Tiff for the Tiff District. So I would like for council to be informed on that, and also, there's six million dollars of Udag money that is still sitting in
We lost the sound on our end.
You lost the sound, Mr. Raybo. You have your volume up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Okay. We can too.
Okay, so to conclude, the six million dollars
Matt, can you hear us?
In three years ago.
We can hear you, Mr. Griffith.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Raybo.
Okay, so the six million dollars that is left over from the Udag in the community development funds can be utilized for infrastructure improvements that Ms. Brennan is mentioning for roads and bridge repair. And I would like for the council to find out from HUD in the Philadelphia office if those funds can be utilized, because previously, Mr. Riley said that there has to be an answer from Philadelphia Office of HUD before those monies can be expended expended or allocated. So that was two years ago, I mentioned it, and there was no answer ever given for that. So I would ask for
There's no audio on our side.
That's okay, Mr. Raybo.
Okay, that's that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'll mention
All right, you're done. Thank you. Is Matt there?
He's got to.
Matt, they're having trouble with the audio?
Not that I know of.
You think it's, you think it's all right?
As far as I can tell, there's nothing on my end.
Mr. Griffith, maybe it might be on your end. Matt tells me it seems to be all right here.
Matt or Ed, we can't hear anything on our side.
Well, Matt is the guy who's here with us right now. And you were you were able to hear earlier, right? Mr. Griffith? You're muted now, Mr. Griffith.
Can anyone else remotely hear the audio?
Yes, I can hear.
Yes, I can hear. I can hear.
Yes, I can hear.
Ms. Prokamo are able to hear. So Mike, your issue, Mr. Griffith. I don't know what to tell him. Mr. Griffin, you
Yeah, we can. Yeah, I can hear him now.
You can hear now?
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Is that your issue or our issue?
Yeah, no, it was my issue. I apologize.
All right, no problem, just so we know if we have to correct something. Go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
Good evening, members of council and fellow citizens. I'm Greg Griffin from Swarfield, and a member of the Wilkes-Barre Area Citizens' Bike Committee. I want to commend Cindy Brennan for organizing the Citizens' Road Committee. This is exciting. More citizen committees are organizing in time for the new council in January. Now, some council members are leaving, and thank you for your service. So the council members that are leaving, please tune in in January, because the citizen committees are forming, and we want to be working with the new council. The selection of the county manager is, I think, the most important decision council will make. I want to thank the selection committee for volunteering to find qualified applicants. It's a grueling process. One county in Virginia County, one county in Virginia, had forty-one applicants they found to interview. None of them were chosen. This is a grueling process that's about to happen, and we've been through it before. Our people's committee will be supporting the new county manager and council in the difficult job of making next year's budget leaner and more efficient, next year's budget. There should be no tax increase, of course. Zero. Too many senior citizens and working families are hurting and cannot pay higher taxes. Our people's committees will be asking for the manager to reduce the budget ten percent next year's budget. The manager's salary will be approximately a hundred ninety thousand dollars, give or take. The budget, approximately one hundred fifty million. Ten percent is fifteen million. The manager's salary will be well worth it when he successfully makes the two thousand twenty-two budget cost less. So So, we're gonna be here, the citizens committees, they're forming. Cindy formed, she did a great job. Uh, we're gonna be working with the new council in support with solutions to difficult problems. And, uh, we absolutely, there's, they're not, in our opinion, there should be not a, a, a tax increase. There are a lot of, uh, when you're paying someone $190,000 who's coming on board from maybe Colorado, he needs the backing of council because he's gonna be up against a lot of roadblocks. Other, other managers we hired had roadblocks. When they came in and tried to do what their training allowed them to do, which was make a more efficient county government. So, our people's committee are gonna be lockstep with our new manager and our new council. So, thank you.
Other members of the public? Other members of the public?
Mr. McGinley? Mr. McGinley, before we adjourn, uh, ju- just real brief, real briefly, I just wanna give kudos to the election board and to the manager and the staff for the, uh, recent recount that we did with the Pennsylvania State Recount, the mandated recount. I, I, I was there as a representative of the party for the entire process and I will tell you that it took a lot of work by a lot of people to get that task accomplished in the short period of time that the state mandated. And I know in the past I've been pretty critical and, and of the election board as well as the staff over there. And I will tell you, I sat through that process and it went very, very well. You probably had, on any given day, you probably had about 15 people in there counting ballots and doing the work that they needed to do to make sure that this recount went seamlessly. The process was transparent, myself and Mr. Caruso were there. They never inhibited us from seeing anything. Uh, it went very, very well and I will tell you that I think we have a very good election board currently. Uh, we've been through some boards that probably weren't, probably at the top of the pile, but I think this, this board is working very, very hard to make sure election integrity is the paramount of their task as an election board. So, I just want to say as a council member, somebody who sat there through that process, they did a fantastic job of getting it done and it took a lot of work by a lot of people and a lot of organizational skills, so I just wanted to put that out there on the, on the record for all to know that, uh, you know, it, it went well, the state recount was done properly and, uh, very, very satisfied with the process that was, was handled by the manager as well as the, uh, ex- election board. So, thank you for allowing me to, uh, put that out there and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Ms. McDermott?
Uh, Ms. Brennan, thank you very much for putting this together. Uh, I look forward to looking through your book. Is it possible for you to forward the, um, letter that you read or your, your speech?
Absolutely, I will absolutely, is there, does everybody want a copy of that?
Yeah, I can forward it to our email, that'd be great.
I will definitely do that, yes.
And as you know, the roads are quite expensive, 375,000 to 425,000 per mile. So, it's gonna be, I believe, you know, five to 10-year process, even if we do get any money on it.
Absolutely.
And another problem is staffing.
Yes.
Absolutely, there's not that many people working.
Well, and, and Mr. O'Neil and, uh, Mr. Mitchell Gold have told me that they have, in the last year or two, have lost dozens of employees. And I believe that's due to not having competitive wages. Um, we've got a great benefit package, but we don't have competitive wages for, for the workers and, you know, they're going out on the roads and they're risking their lives every day with a reflective vest on, so we need to really look at that as a, as a roadblock.
Do we have a motion for adjournment? Ms. McDermott, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. In opposition, any abstentions unheard, motion carries. It's now 7:12, we'll reconvene at 7:20 for the work session.
Recording stopped.
Matt, I have a note here from Matt Voe. Can't hear the meeting room.
How about now?
Matt, can you hear now?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. All right, whatever button you hit seems to work. Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sitt.
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Voe?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present. Dissents or deletions? Motion to adopt the work session agenda?
Ooh.
Mr. Perry?
Second.
Mr. Snee, all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? Any abstentions? None heard? Budget reports, Mr. Swets?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your packet is the budget reports. You have the reports for October. As I put in the AP report, there was more checks than previously. As Mr. Griffith had alluded to. And as Council already knows, many staff were pulled from their regular duties to help with the election, including some accounts payable staff. So with the election being the priority, some checks went out later. It has nothing to do with the county's cash flow situation. So now with people back at their regular offices, we will get caught up. On anything but the taxes, the taxes are around ninety, ninety-two percent budgeted. Where it looks like we'll almost hit that number. We're consistently been two or three hundred thousand over or under for the past three to five years. That's our big number and we've been coming in very close to the budget number. You have the cash balances and we also have a long session to hear from operations tonight. If there's any question I can answer tonight, I will. But if not, any member of council can email me and I will not only email them, but I'll have council back.
Questions for Mr. Swets?
I have questions, Mr. Chair, if I could. Perry, how?
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Let's make, good to see you. Just three, three real brief ones, Brian, for you. First of all, you know, council voted earlier this summer to fund a match for Hazelton, HP, HPT for the public transit. I just want to make sure that reflected that vote. That it was originally one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, should be down close to one hundred and sixty-eight and change, I believe. But I want to make sure that was set for this year, even though the, the transfer didn't pass earlier. But I want to make sure it was still reflected, the correct council vote.
Yes, so when we actually adopted the budget for this year, for 2021, we had the one hundred and eighty-nine in there. Council did amend it and we discussed that again tonight. At this point, we hadn't sent the check out, knowing that it was on the agenda. So yes, it will be for those lower amount, the amended amount of the one hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, thank you for that. Citizen Mark Raabo brought up earlier as well, just two potential revenue streams. I don't know if you were privy to that, with the Jenkins Township Fifth and the Ashley Railroad. Some of them are very, are longstanding. So I want to know if, if, what we could do to make sure that the budget proposed for council to vote on in just a couple of weeks reflects that. And want to know your thoughts on that, on those two items.
Sure, so as everyone knows, until the fourteenth is the scheduled meeting, we can make any amendments to the budget for 2022. Being that I don't have the timing on these, that I don't know if they're going to close in the next month or if they're going to close next year, we can, we can either add them to the budget now or if the budget was passed beforehand, we could do them as budget amendments in 2022. Again, I know you know and other council members and I'm sure just to still the public is aware, we have in January done amendments for the prior year. Our office keeps the budget, keeps the, for the audit entries open for anywhere from forty-five to sixty days because we're not on cash basis. So even up until February, next year's council can make a motion that impacts this year's budget. So not only for 2022, but even for 2021 items. If, you know, so if these, if this dollars come in, in 2022 and 2021 is not closed yet, obviously we heard today that this may happen in 2021. So it can be amended even that late. So I, you know, I have no reason to not think what Mr. Raabo is saying is truthful, but I haven't heard anything about it. And we, as I said, we don't have to amend it today. We can amend it up until next year and still have it be for the 2021 budget.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, if I could ask Mr. Swets a question quick?
Go ahead.
Thanks. Mr. Swets, could you tell me about the six million dollar U-DAG money? Is that, I looked through the budget in the Office of Community Development, that carryover money? Is that, is that listed somewhere that I'm missing in the five hundred and forty? I think it's five forty fund or is, where's that listed at? The six million U-DAG money that we're holding on to for the Hotel Sterling?
It is in their budget. I don't know if it's in the carryover or if it's in regular community development funds. Mr. Ollie will be presenting next week. I can coordinate with him. I know the funds are in there, but I don't know which line and he knows the program much better than I do.
Okay, well, yeah, well, I'll wait for his presentation, but maybe we could ask him if we could use any of that six million dollar money and put it in a, into a reserve, into a reserve fund to try and help offset next year for any potential calamities that may come that way. So thank you for the help on that.
Okay, moving down to the second item. We received an email from Mr. Hackett, which was sent out to everyone in regards to the manager search committee requesting information regarding the proposed salary for the new manager. And that is a result of their bidding ready for an advertisement. So discussion is now open.
Well, I would just say that the charter does set the limits. But I think that realistically, the lower limit is probably not something that we're going to look at to attract qualified candidates. And I would suggest using the, a limit that is somewhere around what the current acting manager is, is being paid.
The current acting manager is being paid at the lowest.
Oh, the very lowest? Okay, then the last manager.
That was about one thirty-seven in that ballpark.
Right. And, you know, maybe somewhere around one thirty. Start there and, and give it a range up to the top. Because you don't know. I mean, it'll depend on what the qualifications are, what the experience is and, and all that. But I think they need a smaller range than the one that was given. I think that was stated by the last manager search committee and there were concerns with this committee also that, that if the range is too broad, you're not going to get a lot of applicants.
Okay. Other members?
Yes, again.
Yes.
I think, I think, you know, we probably should start at a, at a lower range, but then also build in incentives. Should they hit targets or goals, then they can get a bonus or earn a bonus. You know, it seems that round here, money speaks, but I don't think if we, you start at the higher range, you have nowhere else to go and, and to have a productive manager and to ascertain the goals, I think, you know, start a little bit lower. And then if they hit the targets that council sets, you know, because they're going to have some expectations, then I think they can be compensated appropriately. You know, I think that should be maybe worked into the agreement.
Well, if I could just say something about that. I have yet to see a manager who received a list of goals from the entire council.
Right.
And, you know, that was ultimately the goal. But the last manager had a contract that rewarded him for doing what the charter required. So, you know, I'm, I'm not a person that, that looks for bonuses to be awarded to someone for doing what's, what's required by the charter. You know, and if, the idea is that the council will define goals and give them to the manager, that's a great idea, but it hasn't happened in ten years.
There is going to obviously be a new council majority next year and hopefully that would be the case, you know. If they could reduce overtime significantly in some areas, reduce expense of the cost of doing business and save millions, you know. Likewise, you know, using technology or.
Go, go.
Everyone mute please, if they're not speaking?
You know, I think there, there are some, I think, business minded goals that we can set that they could hit, you know, and if they could save significant money, I think it would be a value to give them a little bit more.
Well, I think what they're looking for is base salary, the base salary.
Well, Mr. Lawrence reminds me that actually they're looking for what they think would be the high end. Obviously, the charter has given them parameters in regards to the full range, which I think most people agree that that's too wide a range. In this particular case, they indicated a salary not to exceed one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. It sounded like Mr. Hock, you were talking about one thirty to something in that ballpark?
Yeah.
I would agree about one thirty, one forty, that's it.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila.
Go ahead.
And, a little bit ago, when Mr. Griffith, when Griffin was talking, he had mentioned a county. I can't remember which one it was that had.
He says it's down in Virginia, so it wasn't a PA county.
Because I was wondering how they got so many applicants and where they were in terms of a salary range.
Well, I think the same in way, way back when. Ms. Hock remembers, Mr. Haas remembers. When we first had the county manager search, we had a large number of applications. But if you looked at the applications back then and probably similar today, a lot of them came from communities and states below what I would say the Basin-Dixon line. And Virginia happens to be one of those states that would be below. And I think in their particular state and in many other states in the southern part of the United States, managers, whether it be county manager, city manager, borough manager or whatever, that seems to be one of the procedures that they use quite often. So I'm sure that that has something to do with it. I don't know what the salary situation, Mr. Griffin, didn't indicate that. But he also said that they had forty-one and that they did not select anyone.
Right.
I'm not sure why that was the case. I'm, you know, I'm not privy to that information. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, if I could?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
Okay. I think the concern that the committee is having is the language to attract people to apply for the, to fill out the application process. And I think the language that they put in there is, is prop, is, is pretty appropriate. It just says that, it just basically just kind of puts the top end to what the charter language says. It says the county Loser and offers a competitive reward program that includes a base salary range not to exceed one hundred and eighty-five thousand. That doesn't mean the guy's going to make a hundred or woman's not going to make a hundred and eighty-five. It just means they'll, they'll pay him up to one hundred and eighty-five thousand. And I think that language will help them attract candidates as opposed to saying a hundred and thirty-three thousand to a hundred and eighty-five or, or some language of that effect. I, I don't think that mandates what they're actually going to be paid because it goes on to say that the actual salary would be determined by the candidate's qualifications. So I think it's kind of like a play on words here in order to attract candidates to apply, where if you put a lower salary, you may not get people to actually apply, even though there's a range. So I don't see a problem with what the search committee is trying to do here. As long as they don't exceed, obviously, what the charter mandates. You know, I, and you're not actually identifying what somebody's going to get paid. I, I don't see a problem with the language that they're actually asking to use for, to attract a candidate. I think it's, you know, it's probably a good play on words in order to get people to apply. So I don't see a problem with it. I mean, the only other way I would probably word it if it was an option was to just say, copy and paste the language from the charter of what the salary range is and let them go from there. But I think this is a good vehicle and a good way to word it in order to get people to apply.
Anyone else? I'm hearing no one else. I just have a couple's quick comments. Remember why I've always had a very difficult time paying somebody who's coming in new more than someone who has left. In this particular case, we have a situation where the manager left in July. He was making like one thirty-seven. And probably January, he'd probably be at the one hundred and forty thousand dollar range, give or take. I think that's a good point to look at as far as potential compensation. I also believe that you should word your advertisement appropriately so that there's no misunderstanding in regards to what we are looking for. I think if you're not using it in appropriate language or clarifying appropriate language, I think that's really unfair to the candidates who are applying. That being said, on next Tuesday, we will have a motion in regards to a advertised salary so that we can answer the manager search committee. And they will be meeting, I believe, on Thursday, we'll be meeting on Tuesday. So I'll be able to do that and move that forward so that they would have that information. Moving down to number three. Council committees, if they have nothing to report, please indicate that. Mr. Voe, Act thirteen?
Nothing new.
Okay. ABCs, Mr. Perry?
Monday, November twenty-ninth, six o'clock, virtual meeting. We will interview anybody that needs to apply, that wants to apply.
Thank you. Budget financing, we're in the budget process right now. Mr. Haas, legislative?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Bilbo did advertise his purchase. Actually, I just received it from, sorry, I don't have it ready. And hope we're informed with that. And then as for Mr. Andrea, Mr. Eddie O'Neil is in the process of trying to get the appraised or he did reach out and they're just trying to look at all the details to be able to get the review appraised.
Thank you. Ms. Hock?
Nothing to report on either strategic initiatives or county code.
Thank you. Ms. Radel, I think your committee is wrapped up, am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And email a committee, Ms. Saban?
I think that'll probably wait till next, next council.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes?
If I could ask a question of Ms. Radel about the special election committee? And you made the statement that you think it's wrapped up. Are we going to advise the attorney, are we going to have a meeting on that? Or is that just a given?
We've, no, we're going to have a meeting. That's not a given. Not in my mind, anyway.
So we're going to, we're going to actually.
I don't think we've authorized the attorney to do anything more than what has been done to this point. If we want to move forward, I think it's up to council to make that decision.
Yeah, because he's asking, obviously, we all know that he's asking for a decision to tell him which way to proceed. So we probably need to finish that off.
Yep. White and property, Mr. Haas?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Voe, on the county cares?
Yeah, meeting December sixth.
December sixth, thank you. Riverfront Park, Mr. Haas?
No, same as day one, haven't heard a single thing.
Okay. Yeah, I have not seen anything even in regards to Riverfront Parks. Interesting. They seem to be a lot more active though, last several years prior to this year, I don't know. Okay, operational services. We have scheduled tonight to do the budget review of the operational services. Ms. Crocomall? How are we going to proceed?
Yes, thank you. And good evening, council and the public. Not too long ago, when I initially presented the budget, I mentioned that Loser and County is at a crossroads and that tough decisions need to be made. And we'll be highlighting some of those decisions, particularly in the area of road and bridges. And, but we're here today, ready to discuss the operations divisions, which includes road and bridges, building and grounds, tourism, nine-one-one, EMA, planning and zoning. Operations is the backbone of Loser and County.
Anybody who's not speaking, please mute your microphone. We're getting some feedback from some parties. Thank you, sorry, Ms. Crocomall.
That's fine. Another country heard from. As I was saying, operations is the backbone of Loser and County. They are the reason why businesses and families come to Loser and County and they are the reasons why they say, and operations is our future. So tonight, our theme is destination, Loser and County. Infrastructure breeds economic develop, development. The infrastructure decisions that we make in the next few months could cement our ability to attract national and international businesses to the region. At the center of the economic development in the region is the West Nanticoke Bridge. Danielle, could you bring up the slide?
It's on our monitor.
Okay, got it. Built in nineteen fourteen and rehabilitated in nineteen eighty-seven, this bridge is a rare surviving example in Pennsylvania of a large pin-connected trust bridge. At one time, Pennsylvania was one of the few states with a sizable population of pin-connected trust bridges crossing large rivers. This bridge is thus today distinguished as rare. This bridge was the centerpiece of the area's economic development and she has served us well. But it is now time for a change. In order to attract international and national companies, we will need a new bridge. Companies like Nacero. This company is based in Houston and is bringing a new gasoline to the market that is made from natural gas and renewable natural gas, not crude oil. They have committed to Loser and County. Their commitment is six billion dollars. That's with a B. Six billion dollars investment. And it is the single largest economic development investment in the history of Loser and County. It will create four thousand new jobs and it represents an environmental transformation of Newport Township and Nanticoke City through the reclamation of mine scarred lands to pave the way for a revolutionary manufacturing facility that will change the global market for gasoline by reducing the carbon footprint in the transportation sector by fifty percent. When I initially gave my budget presentation, I talked about infrastructure in the, in the context of making us competitive in the northeast quarter. Nacero is making us competitive in the international market. Other investments in the area which support the idea of a new bridge in Nanticoke, the West Nanticoke Bridge, is the investment by North Point. On the screen, you see the amount of investment that North Point has generated in only a few years. Six thousand seven hundred and seven jobs created, eight hundred million in capital investment, over seven million square footage used and a hundred and twenty-one point two million in annual wages. Next slide, please. North Point used scarred lands. You can see the damage of years of coal mining in the area, what it did to the land. It brought jobs and it fed families, but it also left a very, very significant environmental scars. What you see are images of four different sites. They show the pre-reclamation, during reclamation and the reclaim and the development. Next slide, please. From those scarred lands come the economic development. The other bridge that I want to highlight, next slide, please, please, is the Firefighters Memorial Bridge or the Water Street Bridge in Pittston. This bridge not only historically supported the economic development in Pittston and West Pittston and the surrounding areas, but it symbolizes a character of the area. This bridge was also constructed in nineteen fourteen. It was originally a steel gate bridge until it was rehabilitated in nineteen eighty-four. Do you see a little trend going on here? The Eighth Street Bridge of the same. The Eighth Street Bridge of the same design was demolished in twenty eleven, and the Water Street Firefighters Memorial Bridge preservation is important and holds a significant historical, uh, rating in the local area. Next slide, please. This bridge is now closed, and the photographs on this slide show the significant, uh, and very extraordinary traffic and gridlock that the residents are enduring. The, this has to be resolved. The needs of these communities surrounding this bridge must be supported by the county. So before I hand over the proverbial microphone to Eddie O'Neal, the division head for operation, I want to say that with the influx of money through the ARP funding and the infrastructure bill, we will have the opportunity to invest in transformational infrastructure, which includes roads and bridges. The county needs to look ahead and build for tomorrow. Mr. O'Neal?
Corcamal, can everyone hear me?
Yes, you're coming through, Mr. O'Neal. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, members of council, good evening, and thank you for your time and consideration of the proposed two thousand twenty-two operational services budget. I would like to begin by first thanking our deputy director here at the EMA Center, Dave Elmore, for assisting and coordinating with our IT department. We are presenting as a group from our EMA ELC Center tonight. I, along with our department's heads, have reviewed budgets for the respective areas to make certain that we have allocated funding to provide the necessary services to both internal and external customers, while making every effort to do so in the most efficient and cost-effective manner possible, and keeping in mind our ongoing goal of providing a balanced budget and ultimately reducing the county deficit. We are all here to serve the residents of Luzerne County and are eager to review and, where necessary, defend the proposal we have brought before you. Each of the departments within the Operational Services Division provides services to both county staff and residents alike. Complete customer satisfaction is our mission, and we are here to serve at the pleasure of county council and our county manager, realizing that in order for you to look good, we are responsible to effectively and efficiently carry out the tasks assigned in our respective areas. The COVID pandemic brought many new challenges to employees countywide, but I would like to personally commend the Operational Services team for stepping up and answering the call of many new tasks and a different way of doing business that has become the norm as we have maneuvered through the COVID kind of team crisis. Staffing has continued to be an obstacle for several of our departments, with nine one one, building and grounds, and road and bridge being impacted the hardest. We continue to have vacancies that we are unable to fill, and it is my opinion that consideration of additional measures will be needed in the near future to address this issue. Salaries, unfortunately, are a large contributing factor in our inability to attract quality individuals in today's workforce. We also have an issue of understaffing, which I feel is most prominent in the departments of emergency management, building and grounds, and road and bridge. In an order to effort, in an effort to eliminate some unnecessary reputation throughout our presentation tonight, I would like to briefly discuss and inform council, who may have been informed with previous presentations of the merit review process that took place in twenty twenty-one. Employee evaluations were completed for all exempt employees by their respective supervisors. The evaluations were reviewed with employees and signed by both supervisor and employee. The completed reviews were then forwarded to human resources, who ultimately determined the percentage increase per employee. The values representing the percentage increase for each employee were not disclosed to our department heads or myself. We were simply provided a lump sum total reflecting the total dollar increase for all exempt employees by department. Tonight, each of our department heads will be providing a brief overview of their responsibilities with several, including PowerPoint slides that will assist in demonstrating the scope of their work. Reviewing budget highlights that comparatively look at two thousand twenty-two budget figures deviating from two thousand twenty-one figures, as was requested. And lastly, answering any questions the council may have regarding their department responsibility or proposed budgets. At, with that being said, I would like to begin our presentation and slideshow by first introducing our executive director of planning and zoning, Mr. Matthew Jones.
Good evening, members of council. This is Matt Jones, here at the Emergency Services Center with Eddie O'Neal. I'm the director of planning and zoning for Luzerne County, and I wanted to provide you this evening just a few highlights of some of the core services that our department provides with the budget that you provide to us. The staff of the department provides the following services to the taxpayers of Luzerne County and to the landowners and to their tenants. We help individuals who come into our office seeking zoning permits. We have a skilled staff that gathers information from applicants. They verify conditions on the ground with our mapping databases or through site inspection, and they check applications for compliance with relevant county and municipal codes regarding land use, residential, commercial, or industrial uses, the type of uses. They check the conditions for parking, yard space, paving maximums, traffic glare, or excuse me, light glare and traffic flow, fencing, the size of signs, and flood danger. These services help avoid and mitigate neighboring land using compatibilities, and they protect for the public health and safety. Over the past year, our department issued two hundred and eighty-four zoning permits. You can see here on the, the slide here, on the left side is the Zambetti family in the northern end of Luzerne County, applied to expand the Coloruso restaurant there, came in and got their permit, and that, that building addition and expansion is underway as we speak. You can see on the right side, there is a landowner we received several complaints about, where there's basically a contractor using the yard space as a contractor's yard, and that appeal against our enforcement proceedings is going to go before the zoning hearing board next month. If an applicant's proposal for a zoning permit does not meet the standards already set by council in the county zoning ordinance, then we will offer to help applicants navigate other processes that might be available to them, such as special exceptions or variances. We also process requests for rezonings. The county zoning ordinance has jurisdiction for twenty municipalities in the county, which do not have their own local zoning code. Next slide, please. We also check applications for proposed subdivision and land development plans for compliance with the relevant codes that might involve lot size, site dimensions, or road access, and other details, according to the process required by state law. The county has approval authority for projects proposed within twenty-eight municipalities, which do not have their own ordinance. Over the past year, we processed two hundred and forty-one plan submissions. As you can see on the left side, this is a photo that the staff took of the Bliss Site in Newport Township, where it borders Nanticoke City. That is the site where, on the right of your slide, you can see we reviewed the plans for two buildings, a total one point seven million square foot of new warehousing that will be developed in that area. We checked that site against the land development ordinance, as well as the new zoning ordinance that you all helped us pass last year. When it becomes desirable to update county codes, as we did last year, in terms of the zoning ordinance, the staff helps with that process in terms of drafting the new ordinance language that goes before the planning commission and the council. We coordinate our work with you as the governing body, as well as the citizen volunteers on the planning commission and the zoning hearing board. Next slide, please. Our department also manages the county's development of its comprehensive plan. We published our new comp plan last year. We also published our new hazard mitigation plan with your assistance last fall, and the latter being required, of course, by state and federal law for our communities to maintain their eligibility to receive hazard mitigation grants from state and federal agencies. Next slide, please. Our hazard mitigation plan touched on some of the dangers that we encounter with flooding in our region, the damages we can incur with winter storms that are frequent here, as well as the vulnerability we have on our farmlands for impacts from drought. On the right side, you can see Penn Lake Park Borough's Dam. They are currently applying for a grant from FEMA to shore up the structural integrity of their dam, which is a centerpiece of their community, the lake there, and they would not be eligible to apply for that grant if the county hadn't published the hazard mitigation plan with your assistance last fall to maintain their eligibility. So, uh, next slide, please. We also have a robust transportation planning staff, which helps the Bay County Metropolitan Planning Organization that we are enjoined with, with Lackawanna County, to identify the region's priorities for maintaining road and bridge infrastructure, um, maintenance using state and federal funds according to state and federal laws. Staff in our department lay traffic count wires in the field, and they collect roadway characterization data to help inform these important decisions. On the right side, you could see the resolution that council passed last, or maybe earlier this year, I should say, regarding your opposition to the state's plan to toll nine bridges in the state, including two in Luzerne County, on Interstate eighty. Staff is working with management to make sure that that position is articulated with our state and federal partners. There have been ongoing discussions about the potential tolling of those bridges, and we have been out front in articulating the idea that we'd rather not see those tolls come to pass. On the left side, you can see our two thousand twenty-one, two thousand forty-five long-range transportation plan recently published as well. Next slide. And lastly, we help assist the Conservation District in administering the farmland preservation program here in Luzerne County, and this is a very popular program. The budget I am proposing to you this evening would allow my department to help administer, to basically front the administrative costs of preserving three new farms next year. There is a line of family farms in the queue that are hoping to apply for these funds. The county fronts the administrative costs, and then those costs are reimbursed, those expenses are reimbursed by the State Department of Agriculture. So with that, I will conclude my slideshow. I'll present my threshold, budget threshold information later on in the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next up, and to continue with our slideshow, I would like to introduce the council and bring forward William McIntosh, our department manager of building and grounds and our county engineer.
Good evening, county members, existing and incoming. My department is responsible for the cleaning and maintenance of eleven county buildings. We spor all departments in the county every day. We have people on duty from seven AM to ten thirty PM. Every day, the county is open for business. We're considered essential workers. We come in every day regardless of the circumstances. During snowstorms, when liberal leave is allowed, my staff not only comes in, but they come in early to ensure snow is cleared for the employees and the public. During the early months of the COVID nineteen pandemic, while many employees worked from home, my staff came into work. Their workload actually increased due to the daily required disinfection duties that they're still performing. My shift consists of night custodial workers. Fourteen of my eighteen custodial workers work second shift. I currently have three vacancies I cannot fill. They clean three hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-two square feet in eleven buildings every evening. They do daily disinfections. They clean seventy-nine bathrooms, one hundred and seven, one hundred and six sinks, and one hundred forty-one toilets slash urinals. They empty one thousand fifty-six trash cans and an equal amount of recycling containers. My day shift custodial staff consists of four custodial workers. Two have, are vacant, and they've gone unfilled due to retirements. They clean fifteen thousand square feet in four buildings to maintain four point five acres of grounds for nine buildings. That includes grass, snow removal, leaf pickup, and litter. They set up over sixty-plus events a year and make office deliveries, requests, and other emergent work. I have two maintenance, two day shift maintenance workers that maintain over four hundred thousand square feet across eleven buildings. This includes electrical, plumbing, doors, locks, lights, HVAC, and et cetera. I have one mailroom clerk that processes over three hundred thousand pieces of outgoing mail annually, and they process over that amount of incoming mail. Last but not least, I have one executive secretary that schedules weddings and other events, manages time for the entire staff, handles and assigns incoming office requests, enters purchase requests, and pays purchase orders. And they also help coordinate incoming contractors that we have to use. As I mentioned, I have open custodial positions I cannot fill, and based on industry guidelines, my night shift should have twenty-five people on staff. I have fourteen. Day shift needs five custodians. I have four. Maintenance eight, I have two. Our pay is way below the national and local average. Some people say I can outsource, and outsource can cost more, a lot more. Without proper staffing, cleanliness will suffer. That's the end of my report.
Mr. O'Neal?
Thank you, Larry, for that presentation, or I'm sorry, Bill. At this time, I'd like to bring up our executive director of nine one one, Mr. Fred Rosenkrantz.
Ladies and members of council, Fred Rosenkrantz, nine one one executive director, who oversees the staff complement of ninety-five employees. If you recall, a few months back, I presented an update to council on the P twenty-five countywide digital radio project, and I just have a few slides to show you some of the progress. The slide on the left is showing our nine one one center with extensive tower work already completed as part of this project. Council invested a significant amount of money in this through loan borrowing, so we were able to complete a large portion of that since my update to council. On the right is a completed one hundred and forty-foot tower at the EMA facility. Again, significant progress has been made, fortunately, and we're still looking at a go-live date of second quarter, twenty twenty-two. Next slide, please. Top left slide is the Harris Pond Road Tower Site. That's a complete site that cost approximately six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We received a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar LSA grant to cover a portion of that. The slide on the right is showing our tower building behind the nine one one center. As you can see, there's a significant amount of technology that goes into providing communications to the one hundred and seventy-five police, fire, and EMS agencies that we provide service for in our county. A slide on the bottom middle is our back room with a significant amount of A slide on the bottom middle is our back room with a significant amount of P-25 digital radio equipment already installed and ready to go. So I just wanted to show council some of the infrastructure that you've invested in and assisted us with, and we appreciate your support.
All right. Thank you, Fred. Next up, I'd like to introduce to you Lawrence Fleisch, our departmental manager for Roden Bridge and our chief county engineer.
Good evening, Lawrence Fleisch. I am the chief county engineer of Luzern County, and I am department head for engineering and Roden Bridge. Engineering currently handles driveway permits, capital improvement, design, subdivision reviews, roadway projects, also drainage issues, and other aspects engineering needs. The Roden Bridge Department handles our maintenance over county roads and bridges. This year, currently, the engineering department alone handled over one hundred and fifty-two subdivision reviews. There are currently nine roadway projects for 2021 in design, construction, or completed to date. There's also twenty-one large bridge projects that were, that are in design, construction or completed for 2021. And there's sixteen building and capital improvement projects in design, construction are also completed. We also inspected over fifty small bridges. We had issued and dealt with issues for eleven roadway drainage problems throughout the county. And there's also eight small bridge projects that are either in design, construction, or completion. They range from anything less than a point four to five in structure. We also issued sixteen utility access or roadway permits. The first slide you're looking at, I've been asked to go through a bridge construction process. For this particular bridge, it is East County Road Bridge in Triple L Township. And the slide on the left is the beginning demolition of the structure. The only thing remaining in the slide is currently an abutment, existing abutment. Now, before I even get to that slide, there are several hurdles that have to be jumped over, one of which is the design, second of which is permitting, third utilities, and any right-of-way for temporary and permanent access to the bridge. All of that stuff included has to be done first or in the process of before we can actually get out there. When the project goes out for bid, contractor is hired, and this is his first step, is he does the demolition and he puts in concrete barriers in the stream as he starts the demolition. The second slide you'll see is the de-watering of the footing elevation, which is usually about six feet lower than stream bed. That's what he's doing in that slide. Next. On the left, you'll see the rebar and formwork for the footing installation of the abutment, and you'll see the boom coming down, hanging the concrete end, boom it over, and then use the bucket to fill the hole sometimes. Now, on the right side, you'll see the footing is done, the concrete, and they are starting with the actual abutment wall. Left, you'll see the completed abutment with the two wing walls and riprap protection in place. At this time, they'll slowly, they'll be moving the cofferdam and barrier in front of the abutment and switching to the other side. On the right slide, you could see the work being done on the other abutment across the river, as they have the cofferdam in place and the other side is ready to go. Next slide. Upper left hand corner, you'll see the placement of the adjacent box being beams set by two cranes on either side of the structure. On the right, upper right side is the placement of all the adjacent boxes in place. The lower side is pretty much the finished product at this point. The barriers have been poured, the concrete deck has been poured. They'll be paved, and then the side rail will get installed, and at that point, the bridge will be open for traffic. That normal process for that takes, depending on all the upfront stuff, longest it could take is a year, shortest I've seen it take is maybe, in this size bridge, probably about six months. This one took a bit longer because we had the utility issue. And once the utilities are, temporary utilities are done, to put back the permanent ones, they had to be moved in order to get the beams in place. Next slide. Here's a list of our 2021 completed projects that we did. As you notice, the East County Road Bridge is on the bottom, as that was a full replacement. Couple other ones were just rehabs. They were a little bit of smaller structures. We did have two repairs, one of which was for the Idastorm that was a damage that's only a temporary fix, where they're going to get some federal money to fix that one permanently. East County Road Bridge in Hollaback Township was the local fighter fee money that was a replacement on a relatively medium-sized structure. The Mountain Road one in Union Township, the only superstructure replacement. And the West Cherry Road in Escapet Township was a rehab. The road projects include North and South Visels, Butler Township, which were funded by, one of them was funded by a PennDOT multimodal grant, and the South Visels was funded by a community block grant. Hobby Road was done with some base repair, as was Blackfoot Road, all of which were accomplished in 2021. Next slide. This map highlights those locations of the bridges in our area. All the red indicators with the numbers are bridges. We have currently about two hundred and ninety-seven bridges. These highlight the one in the blue with the arrows indicate the ones that were completed or repaired or rehabbed in 2021. Next slide. This is a map showing all of the county roads in Luzern County. We prompt, we have right now currently one hundred and twenty-one miles. We have given Butler Township and Plowell Township and Cunningham Borough took away one of our bridges, or roads, I'm sorry, which is all just a little under five miles, so we're down to one hundred and twenty-one. Out of the one hundred and twenty-one, thirteen point six miles are less than five years old. Either they're either reconstructed, overlaid, or in fairly new condition, complete roadway pavement on them. Next, we currently in design, we have two bridges, two roads, West County and Hillside Road. That's about five point one miles. And we also have two roads that we're applying for grants for, that would be Ransom and Broadway Road. That's about three point five miles. So moving forward, we are trying to get some more funds for additional roadway work. Next slide. And that's currently all I have.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Last up for our slide presentation, I would like to bring up our emergency management director, Lucille Morgan.
Evening, everyone. I'd like to give you a brief summary of the duties and responsibilities of emergency management. As you could see on the first slide, it shows a few of the disasters we've had over the past years. Emergency Management Agency is responsible for the judicious planning, assignment, and coordination of all available resources for an integrated program of prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery for emergencies of any kind that may occur within Luzern County. Our primary duties require our Department of Foreign Employees to be on call and available to all seventy-six municipalities 24/7, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and include, but not limited to, responding to scene calls when requested, handling resource requests, performing damage assessments, and training emergency management personnel throughout the state. For the last five years alone, our county has endured two tornadoes, a twenty-six-mile-long ice jam, and several major snowstorms and floods, all of which were, we were heavily involved in numerous operational periods lasting from days to months. Since February of 2020, we have been heavily involved in the distribution and dissemination of health department information, personal protective equipment to first responders, and providing the planning and operational guidance for several testing and vaccine distribution sites. Next slide, please. Currently, we are, I'm sorry, in the nineties, EMA had seven full-time employees and less duties and responsibilities. Currently, we are responding to a global pandemic and a natural disaster with four full-time employees in addition to everything previously mentioned. By law, we are required to be able to respond to any disaster, and having only four employees to accomplish that is a major strain that only makes our mission that much harder. In comparison, Lehigh County has six full-time and one full-time vacancy and three part-time employees, and Northampton County has several, seven full-time employees. Please see this slide for other statistics to compare. Like every other department, we are susceptible to illness and prolonged apathies of employees. This leaves us even more vulnerable at times. Next slide, please. In addition to emergency responses, we are responsible for maintaining plans, participating in multiple annual drills and training, as well as attending meetings and conferences for our county's nuclear power plant. We also maintain and assist in the creation, updating of emergency operation plans for the seventy-six municipalities. Next slide, please. Twelve industrial parks, two hundred and fifty chemical facilities, three power plants, a major railroad system. Next slide, please. Interstates and many local arteries, six pipelines, three airports, one hundred and seventy-seven daycares, assisted living facilities and nursing homes, and fourteen medical facilities. Next slide, please. During emergent and non-emergent events, we work alongside some of the finest organizations in the state, such as EMS of NEPA, the Red Cross, the Pennsylvania Department of Health, neighboring counties, and every fire, EMS, and police department in the county when requested. Next slide, please. We take great pride in providing training, presentations, planned maintenance, and safety programs to all of our twelve school districts and two ally use. Our programs include fire prevention, EMA duties and responsibilities, and safe school initiatives to include providing active shooter response and recovery training as a member of the county's Safe School Committee.
All right. At this time, I would like to once again go through our departments in the order that you've been given the budget reports and ask them to run through our one cheaters indicating the highlights of these department budget changes for 2022. And I would like to begin with our executive director of Planning and Zoning, Matt Jones.
Thank you, Eddie. This is Matt Jones. Good evening again, council. This is the proposed department budget for 2022 for planning and zoning. Last year in 2021, the adopted revenue was six hundred seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. The proposed revenue for 2022 is six hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. In the 2021 adopted budget, the expenses totaled seven hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars. And the expenses in my department proposed for 2022 total six hundred fifty-two thousand sixty-eight dollars. I have a small but hard-working staff. I have five exempt positions, and I have, within the department, there are two union positions. The merit increase total that has been proposed is five thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars across all exempt employees. And I will briefly here go through the, those few accounts that have changed. Here I, here I have, I should say, those accounts that have changed in terms of revenues that have gone down ten percent or ten thousand dollars or more, or expenses that have gone up, proposed expenses that have gone up from the prior year of more than ten percent or more than ten thousand dollars. So very quickly, the line for PennDOT revenues coming in has changed eleven percent. The accounting for this is that we had been catching up in terms of recouping grant revenues from PennDOT under our transportation planning program. The good news on this is that we are now caught up. We have recouped those tens of thousands of dollars. For the coming year's budget, we expect to have the normal four quarters of reimbursements coming in rather than the five that we had to scramble to get this past year to get us caught up on this front. And so therefore, it's reflected in the revenue going down a little bit from year to year. But we're not losing any money anticipated to be collected under that program. The next line is our anticipated grant from DCED. This was to help defray the county fronting costs to develop our comprehensive plan mandated by the state. That plan is now complete and published. That grant program will not be continuing into next year, and therefore, I don't anticipate any revenue coming in under that line because that project is complete. Under other income, there is a dip in revenues in this line, and again, that's accounted for the fact that the By County Comprehensive Plan is done. This was the line under which I would receive reimbursements from Lackawanna County as their share of participating in that plan development process. They, the plan is finished, and so there'll be no revenues coming in for those purposes next year. If you look at expenses, the line for engineering and architectural fees, these are fees that we pay outside engineering consultants to help us review some of the technical aspects of land development plans. There's a sizable increase in how much I anticipate us paying for those services, those consulting services next year. But that increase is commensurate with the fees that we collect when we accept land development proposals in our office from private applicants and landowners. In fact, the more applications we get, the more revenues we collect, and it helps, it basically fully covers any increased expenses in this line. The next line is travel expense, and the one that's two lines after that has to do with meeting and conference and training fees. These are related expense lines. I am proposing that we return, these lines were cut from the 2021 budget in order to balance this current year's budget last fall, and I'm proposing to restore these budget lines to allow five staffers to attend a statewide conference where we have FaceTime with state grant officials who help fund our projects and provide, these events provide cutting-edge training on transportation infrastructure planning, community zoning, and land use law, eighty percent of these expenses of which are reimbursable under our state grant with PennDOT. And so, the last item here is the agricultural program. These are, this is the line under which my department helps pay the administrative expenses of farmland preservation. In the budget proposal for this coming year, I am asking you to provide a, an amount of monies that will allow us to preserve three family farms next year to be able to front those administrative costs for land surveys and, and get those farms preserved, and then all of these expenses are then reimbursed by the State Department of Agriculture. If there's any questions, I'll be available. Otherwise, Bill McIntosh is here to present Building and Grounds. Thank you.
Mr. McGinley, can I ask a question as we go along on the department, so we don't have to go back?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Jones, it's Walter Griffith. How are you?
Hi, Mr. Griffith. How are you?
I'm wonderful. Thank you. I just have one quick question for you. If you could speak to line five, ten, fifteen, where the total for non-represented employees was two hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. The county managed, the department entry was two sixty-three, one twenty-four, but the manager put in for two fifty-six, four hundred. Could you speak to as to why there's a sixty-seven hundred dollar difference there? Could you speak to as to why there's a sixty-seven hundred dollar difference there?
Yes, Mr. Griffin, can you repeat the question? I'm looking at my sheet in front of me.
So if you, if you look at your budget, if you look at your budget sheet on line number, account number five, ten dot fifteen. There's a discrepancy of sixty-seven hundred dollars between the department entry and the county manager entry. Could you speak to whether, uh, why there's a difference there? You're at, the manager's actually giving you six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars less than the department actually put in for non-wages. So I just want to make sure that the budget's accurate.
Uh, I can speak for that. This is Danielle. Um, I think we just added up all the wages together, but um, when reviewing the final budget, it was. Uh, the two fifty-six is correct.
So he's reducing his staff pay, uh, the salaries for his staff? Is that accurate?
No, there's no, no, there is no difference between this year and last year. And in the non-rep wages, we actually get reimbursed from PennDOT for one of the positions.
So the adopted budget of two sixty-three, one twenty-four was probably incorrect?
Yes, the two fifty-six is correct.
The two fifty-six is correct. Okay, very good. Just so I know that we're allocating the proper amounts for that department. That's fine. That's the only question I had, Mr. McGinley. Thank you so much.
Mr. McIntosh?
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Are there any other questions for the department?
None at this time. If there are, we'll email them to you. Thank you. Mr. McIntosh?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to uh add, add a note um and commend Mr. Jones and his team of transportation planners. Um, he mentioned about getting caught up on the revenue reimbursements from the, from the MPO. Uh, they managed to catch up. We were seven quarters in the, in the rears. When he came on board and within eight months' time, he and his two transportation planners were able to catch us up. On all those past reimbursements that were long overdue. So I would just like to commend him on that note. Uh, without any further ado, I'll bring up Mr. McIntosh.
Good evening again. Uh, building and grounds budget adopted revenue has not changed from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. Expenses have gone up approximately seventy-three hundred dollars and that's less than, that's approximately one-half of a percent. The overall budget for building and ground is less than one percent of the entire county budget. On the position count, I have one non-represented employee with a proposed merit increase of five hundred and seventeen dollars. I have twenty-one positions, however, as of the end of this week, I only have sixteen that will be filled. On the expense side, I, the changes I have proposed for advertising, I'm adding two hundred dollars from six hundred to eight hundred. And that's to account for, we want to do an advertisement for the wedding planner and the remainder is for advertising vacant positions. The second one is repairer buildings and uh maintenance of those buildings. We are going from sixty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand dollars. And that's to adjust for the inflation because the cost of materials has skyrocketed in the past year and a half. Pest control, current trend is um year-to-date, we spent three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. So we're going to ask for four thousand this year versus thirty-five hundred from last year. Uh, natural gas, we're asking for an additional five thousand dollars from thirty to thirty-five thousand. That's to account for a long-running issue we've had when we put the new boilers in the courthouse. That gas bill then transferred to building from grounds from the boiler plant, however. For some reason, we keep missing the boat on this, so I actually need approximately thirty-five thousand dollars to pay for the natural gas for the courthouse, Penn Place. And the other buildings that fall under my, uh, my budget. The last account that I'm requesting a small increase is machinery and equipment over five thousand dollars. There is a little error. It was fifteen thousand in two thousand twenty-one. It'll be twenty-three thousand requested for two thousand twenty-two. A re, increase of approximately, of seven thousand dollars. This is to account for, we need expecting pick, structure of the lift gate in my department to assist my staff with moving snow blowers during a storm event. Pending any questions, that's the end of my report.
Mr. McIntosh, the wedding planner, a little more clarity on that?
Okay, so since we rent the courthouse out for weddings, we um, two years ago, we didn't do it last year because of the pandemic. We put an advertisement, a full-page advertisement in to um advertise the renting of the courthouse rotunda for people to have their weddings in. That generated a, a very large amount of inquiries and rentals, which um. This year, we did twenty-four, approximately five hundred dollars a piece that we brought in. About twelve thousand dollars in revenue just because of um renting out the rotunda.
So that six ninety-five figure is for an advertisement?
That is correct.
That would go out so people would know that they could rent the rotunda to have their ceremony?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Uh, you had said about fifteen employees. What was that? You said at the end of the week or I apologize, I didn't hear it clear?
That was sixteen, but at the end of the week, how many employees we have under uh represented?
We're budgeted for twenty-one, but as of the end of this week, all we have.
I know, but at the end of the week, you said you would have how many?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Correct.
Thank, thank you.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Mr. McIntosh, it's uh, Mr. Griffith. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good. I have a couple of questions. So when you advertise for the weddings and, and, and you book any weddings, where's the revenue categorized in your budget?
Um, for some reason, I don't get credit for that.
Well, where does that revenue go? Who gets credit for that revenue?
Um, it's in general government under the rent.
So, so why is his uh cost allocation for the expense coming out of his budget then? If he's not gaining the revenue, why are we charging his account for the expense?
We're only charging for the advertisement, I believe, right?
Well, that's an expense, that's an expense for the wedding, yes. That should, that should, it should be offset by the revenue coming in, correct?
Can I speak for a second? It's Brian. The revenue is in forty-one seventy-six, general government. If you want to move the advertisement into forty-one seventy-six and not in Mr. McIntosh's department. Or if you'd like us to move the revenue uh to Mr. McIntosh's department, uh, either would make sense to us. It was always in budget and finance, not because we run the department, uh, just because general government is under us, so. We considered weddings under general government and that's where it always was kept.
So could we, could we change, could we put the wedding, any revenues that he gets from the rental of the courthouse into other income? And, and if you could tell council how much that is, then we could budget that accordingly for uh, Mr. McIntosh's account doesn't take a expense hit.
Yeah, we could move it from ours to his going forward and we just have to explain that for the audit and for council going forward, but that's fine.
Yeah, do you know, do you know how much money that generates off the top of your head, Brian?
Uh, in a quote-unquote "normal" year, uh, you're talking, you know, twenty or thirty weddings at around four or five hundred dollars a piece. So you're talking like maybe twelve thousand dollars. Uh, I'm not, I don't have New World up right now, but that's.
Right, but we could, we could probably safely assume that we could probably budget ten thousand in revenue and under, under other income for that then, right?
Yeah, we would just, we, we would just move it from forty-one seventy-six then. Yep.
Okay. All right, that, that, that answers that, that question. And then if you would also ans, answer another, I think I have a, a couple on. Let me see, Roden Bridge, that's not one. So I'm going to go to the expense side. And if, Mr. McIntosh, if you could help me with uh, if you just find my page here. I can find it here, click Roden Bridge. Oh, building and grounds, okay, here. Uh, wages and overtime. You, you have the ten thousand dollar budget for wages of overtime and that's in line item five, ten, thirty-five. But you, you've never spent that much money in overtime to date for the last three or four years, so. Is that, is that because of your short staffing that you, because you're, you're, you're sixteen employees and you're supposed to have twenty or? Or what's the reason for the excessive overtime number?
Okay, the overtime number is also account for, um, a lot of times we have to bring people in on the holidays to account. So we, we have to do certain work when no one's in the building. And, and also for snow removal, um, we have to bring them in early. Um, that number is not really high because I'm having a hard time getting people to work overtime because. Unfortunately, due to our, our salary levels, most of my staff have to work a second job. And that's really come out to light in um the recent months, that reason a lot of people don't want to work overtime.
Right, but my que, but my, my question is on the amended, on your two thousand twenty-one budget, you, you budgeted ten thousand, but you only spent forty-six hundred. To date and where this report was run as of the end of this month, well, up to till today. And, and you had in two thousand twenty, only spent sixty-nine hundred and in two thousand nineteen, you spent thirty-seven. So do you think ten thousand is a little bit high for your expense on that line item or?
Um, right, and if I was fully staffed, um, that number would be accurate, but with, um, it's very, like I said, it's very hard to get people come in. A lot of our snowstorms haven't been on the, um, I haven't had to use it and I do try to control my overtime. Um, so that number doesn't, I'm just kinda, just didn't want to run over if uh, you know, we have a big event that's gonna really drive up my costs.
Okay, and then the, the other question I have is under five fifty, thirty-eight, which is electricity. Are we realizing any reductions at all from the McClure program that the council spent uh borrowed money for in that program? It just seems that every, and it's not particularly your budget, it just seems every line item that has electricity and it seems to have be exponentially higher. Than it's been in the past. And I, I thought that the whole purpose of that McClure program was to lower our cost. But it doesn't seem to be uh working very well for us at this moment. So could you speak to, do you think that's accurate?
Yes, it actually, we, we see it quite a bit. Um, and unfortunately, the electric's a little, um, it could be, it's kind of like a moving target. Because if we have a very warm summer, air conditioning is a big, um, a big usage of electricity. And um, if we have a, you know, a light, a warm, excuse me, not a really warm summer, the electricity bill's gonna be down. Because the air conditioners are a very large usage of electricity and currently, um, energy costs are rising in general. Um, so we did see a big savings. Unfortunately, that was a one-time savings. We want to see a big drop. And then everything, of course, is gonna start um going up because of increased energy costs. And then, of course, the variable of a very warm summer compared to a cool summer.
Okay, and my last, my last question for you, Mr. McIntosh, on number five fifty, forty-eight, repairs, maintenance and miscellaneous. You had budgeted in two thousand twenty-one, five thousand dollars for that line item. You took a thousand dollars out as a budget amendment to reduce that to four thousand, because you must have needed a thousand in some other line item. Yet you budgeted another five thousand again this year. So my question is, why are we budgeting five thousand this year instead of four thousand? Seems out, you only needed four thousand uh last year and you haven't, you actually haven't spent that.
Uh, the, the five thousand, this is carryover from last year.
Okay, so, so you really don't need the four, five thousand, you only need four according to your budget, right?
Uh, yes, that, that would be, yeah, this year we needed four. I, I can't predict what next year is going to be.
Right, but I'm saying this year you haven't spent three thousand yet. And, and again, like I said, you took a thousand out during the beginning of the year for a budget transfer, so you really don't have a. You know, you're, I think you're a little over budget there, but uh, I, I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Right, and we, um, and with my, um, and with the unpredictability of the COVID and how, and people coming in and out. But what typically how I run my budgets, I try to go make very conservative at the beginning of the year and make sure there's no unexpected, um. Repairs I'm gonna have to come and wind up short, but when I get to the end of the year, I will try to fix things that I can't afford to fix. Rather than um let them go on um, on, on fix to um the next year. So.
That, that's all, that's all I have, Mr. McGinley. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Who's gonna handle the boiler plant, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, um, I'd like to bring up our mechanical systems manager, um, our department of one, um, Mr. Robert Dudik. To go through the, the uh budget highlights for the boiler plant department.
Good evening, council. My name is Robert Dudik, mechanical systems op, manager. Operate central boiler plant which supplies heat for the prison, boiler warehouse, EMA and Roden Bridge. While maintaining heating and cooling systems in all county buildings, which includes boilers, chillers, rooftop units and our building maintenance management system. Also assist with repairs to mechanical and plumbing with our in-house maintenance team. Also solicit proposals for, uh, preventive maintenance contracts for HVAC and boiler equipment. Moving on to the budget. For two thousand twenty-one adopted expenses, I had two hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. For two thousand twenty-two proposed expenses, I have two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Merit increase of seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That's it.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, the only question I have is it, you know, because you're an employee of one, it's really easy to figure out your merit increase, which is two percent. So that might give everybody an idea of what, what the merit increase seems to be across the, across the departments, but that, I'm not, not saying that. I, I'm, I'm opposed to that. I'm just trying to make an observation here. So, so that helps identify that. Thank you, Mr. Dudik.
Okay, moving on to the general fund. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, next I'd like to bring up once again our executive director of nine-one-one, Fred Rosenkrantz. Uh, to go through our nine-one-one budgets and general fund and our two sixty and two sixty-five funds.
Go ahead.
Good evening again. Fred Rosenkrantz, uh, prior to going through my summaries uh for nine-one-one, I'd just like to highlight some topics and duties uh outside of my. Original slide presentation on the radio project. Um, if, if you don't know, we currently dispatch and handle nine-one-one calls for all seventy-six municipalities within Luzerne County. And we have an average yearly call volume of almost four hundred and twenty-five thousand. We were one of the first counties in Pennsylvania to offer smart nine-one-one services and have offered texting to nine-one-one services since two thousand fifteen. We average nearly twelve hundred calls daily. Holidays, storms and major catastrophic events will increase our daily call volume significantly. And Luzerne County nine-one-one processed, processed a total of over four hundred and ten thousand administrative and nine-one-one calls in two thousand twenty. Uh, down a little bit due to the COVID pandemic. Uh, statistics compiled from a two thousand nineteen statewide report issued by Pima. Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency shows our facility as one of the fifteen top busiest public safety answering points. Out of the sixty-two countywide dispatch centers in the Commonwealth of PA. Through the pandemic and through everything we've been through the last couple of years, Pima reviewed and approved our training program. On January twenty fifteen, uh, or January fifteen, twenty twenty-one. We also received nine-one-one training program recertification and accreditation through APCO, the Association for Public Safety Communications Officials. Um, and we are currently in union contract negotiations with AFME. To discuss starting salaries for nine-one-one telecommunications and working through the difficulty in recruiting candidates. It's extremely difficult to recruit and retain employees when surrounding areas starting salaries such as Chewy are eighteen dollars an hour with less stress and responsibilities. They are starting their employees at higher salary to stuff boxes than we are paying our staff to deal with a nine-one-one caller. Whose baby is not breathing or having to listen to someone commit suicide on that line. Employees are working exorbitant amounts of overtime and we are near a staffing crisis if we lose any additional telecommunications. Sixteen-hour days are not uncommon with mandates occurring almost every day. And also to compare a PSP, Pennsylvania State Police, PCO position, which is a similar. Uh, job duties has a current starting salary of over forty-two thousand dollars a year. It has become very difficult to compete for and retain telecommunications employees in the current job market. As of today, while in presenting this budget, we have twenty vacancies for telecommunications. With a starting salary of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars a year, that's about fifteen dollars and eighty-one cents an hour. COVID has caused a major disruption in our recruiting and training efforts and we not, cannot seem to fill vacancies. So as I go through these one cheaters and present our budget. You will see that nine-one-one funding covers a very large portion of our annual budgetary operating expenses. With a minimal percentage derived from general fund contributions. So starting with the one cheater for the one hundred fund, nine-one-one general fund. You'll see that our proposed revenue in two thousand twenty-two is forty thousand dollars. That's a reimbursement. To the general fund for administrative support and services through budget and finance and other. Departments that provide audit services and other support services. And in two thousand twenty-two, our expenses have actually gone down for the general fund obligation. And in twenty twenty two, our expenses have actually gone down for the general fund obligation portion by, uh, fifteen hundred dollars. So our proposed expenses are seventy six thousand, six hundred. That's it for the general fund side, uh, of the budget. The lion's share of our budget net annual operation expenses are covered by our nine one one funding. Our proposed revenue is eight million, two hundred and eighty nine thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and balanced on the proposed expenses side. And out of the nine one one funding budget, we cover one hundred percent of the salary costs with the general fund sharing a portion of the pension and healthcare costs on the general fund side. We're looking at keeping our staffing complement the same, twenty three for non-represented and seventy two for represented. And, uh, Mr. O'Neil already touched on the merit increases, but we're looking at covering one hundred percent of the non-rep merit increases of twenty one thousand, four hundred and eight dollars, one hundred percent out of the two sixty nine one one funding budget with no general fund obligation. Uh, looking at the interest income, uh, going line by line, there's changes in that due to having less income and lower balances carried forward in the bank account annually. Uh, the retirement, you'll see we're increasing our contribution. That direct increase of to one hundred and eighty five thousand dollars is to help offset the anticipated uh, salary increases for the union represented employees as we're going through the bargaining process. Other contractual, again, there, uh, the increase is directly offset by receiving Pima grant funding and cash balance carry forward into twenty twenty two under the Pima funding. Uh, background checks, obviously, if we're going to be hopefully hiring more staff, uh, we're gonna need more in that line item. And again, that's one hundred percent nine one one funding covered, uh, with no general fund increase required. Uh, meetings, conferences and training, uh, like EMA, we have required training annually that we have to go to and we're looking at an increase slightly to those costs for, uh, once COVID restrictions are lifted, hopefully. Uh, and the final two, the capital ineligible, that's directly offset by our anticipated revenues under the four sixty dot thirty one special expense reimbursement line item of thirty five thousand dollars. So that's directly where we have the expenses tied to that. And including the miscellaneous eligible as well. Um, any of those expenses are directly offset by CARES Act revenue, Pima grant funding or any other revenue received directly into the Pima nine one one funding account. And then our third budget that we operate out of, as council is aware, is the two sixty five nine one one digital upgrade budget. And again, that was the tied directly to the loan borrowing. And any expenses or revenue is directly tied to the amount of the loan borrowing and LSA grant funding received in twenty twenty one and anticipated in twenty twenty two. So with that, um, rather than going line by line, if, if council has any questions, um, again, the general fund really has no changes and very minimal to the overall impact of the budget.
Questions for Mr. Rosenkrantz?
Um, Mr. McGinnity?
Yes, Mr. Griffin.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Mr. Rosenkrantz, it's Mr. Griffin. How are you?
Doing well, Mr. Griffin.
But thanks. Good. Hey, I just want you to speak to the, uh, on your position list, uh, that we have in our budget. It shows that there's ninety positions. But your report's showing ninety five. Is that which, which, am I missing something somewhere along the line? Your report shows twenty three represent, non-represented and seventy two represented, right?
Correct.
But the position budget that we have in our budget shows ninety positions. So they do show some that are obviously not being, uh, filled next year. And, and I'm wondering if there's probably five there. Let me just take a look quick and see. Yes, there's five there that are not, oh, actually, one, two, three, four, that are not currently gonna be filled next year. So I'm wondering if, uh, you're counting the ones that the.
I hope one of them's not mine. I'll start with that.
No, it's not.
Uh, um, just, uh, just to explain that briefly, through the ASME contract negotiations, uh, we're, we're currently negotiating with ASME and we have to present that portion, uh, in our anticipated, uh, position count. So being that we're in negotiations, um, I can't speak too much to it, but if it's approved and we get a final contract ratified by the end of the year, it's anticipated that we're going to be eliminating four unfilled vacant positions uh, to help offset anticipated starting salary increases and through the collective bargaining process. So without delving too much into it, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. The only, the only concern that I obviously would have is that you're not successful in your negotiations. How are we gonna, uh, anticipate that additional expense, uh, if, if you're not successful? So, um, that's, that's my concern. So I would, I would certainly, if it was, you know, if I was setting up the budget, I think I probably would have anticipated you having it and then using it as a revenue, uh, enhancement as opposed to, uh, trying to figure out where you're gonna get the money if you're not successful. So, uh, I, that's what my question was, because we're budgeting for ninety positions, but you're, you're showing you have ninety five. So I don't know how we're gonna, but the, most of that's all paid through your nine one one funding anyway, isn't it, uh, Mr. Rosenkrantz?
No matter what is, uh, collectively bargained, I will be able to cover one hundred percent of those salaries, whether we cut.
Okay.
Or to, uh, offset some of the expenses, I, I've already budgeted to be able to handle that.
Okay. So it won't, it won't affect the general fund anyway?
No, there, and honestly, uh, I've already anticipated increases on the general fund side and that's why I'm reimbursing one hundred and eighty five thousand for pension as opposed to one hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. McGinnity. I appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. O'Neil, emergency manager?
Yes, Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like once again bring up our, uh, director coordinator of emergency management, Missia Morgan, uh, who will go over our general fund, our hazmat fund and radiation budget.
Good evening again. Um, this is our one hundred account for emergency management. Uh, the twenty twenty one adopted revenue is a hundred and three thousand, a hundred and twenty six dollars. The, uh, twenty twenty two proposed revenue is a hundred and nine thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty five dollars. The twenty twenty one adopted expenses is a hundred and eighty one thousand and forty nine dollars. And the twenty two, twenty twenty two proposed expenses are a hundred and eighty five thousand, four hundred and ninety six dollars. Our position count, non-rep as of one one twenty twenty one is four. Uh, rep as of one one twenty twenty one was zero. Non-rep twenty twenty was four and rep twenty twenty was zero. Merit increase for twenty twenty one is four thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. Um, the accounts with changes over ten percent and or ten thousand dollars, no changes that qualify under our revenues. Um, under our expenses, the five fifty dot thirty advertising budget, twenty twenty one adopted was seventy five dollars. The twenty twenty two requested is four hundred dollars, change of four hundred and thirty three percent. Um, that increase is just to the advertisement of anticipated positions and any, any other, uh, info necessary to perform our jobs that would need to be advertised. Um, under the five sixty dot sixty four meeting, conference and training fee account, the twenty twenty one adopted was five hundred dollars. The twenty twenty two requested is two thousand dollars. That's a percentage change of three hundred percent. That increase is due to, um, we would like to use funds to utilize the purchase of a Bucks County community training package for fifteen hundred dollars. Um, there is some specialized training that we would like to do, uh, next year, if that would be approved. That's the end of our hundred account.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. O'Neil, Roden Bridge?
Okay, I'm sorry. I have a four sixty account, the hazmat account. Um, the twenty twenty one adopted revenue is two hundred and eighty four thousand, six hundred and forty two dollars. The twenty twenty two provo, proposed revenue is two hundred and seventy seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. The twenty twenty one adopted expenses are two hundred and eighty four thousand, six hundred and forty two. The twenty twenty two proposed expenses are two hundred and seventy seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety. Uh, the position count for rep and non-rep is zero. Uh, the merit increase for twenty twenty one is budgeted in the general fund. Uh, accounts with changes over ten percent and or ten thousand dollars under the revenues, four three five point one four, the emergency management agency line. The twenty twenty one adopted is thirty one thousand, seven hundred and sixty six. The twenty twenty two requested is twenty five thousand, one twenty four. It's a percent change of twenty point nine three percent. And that is due to a decrease in grant funding. Uh, Pima grants calculate these figures, so it's nothing that we did here at EMA. Um, they just use a formula, so we'll get a little bit less, uh, funding this year, but it's out of our control. Um, under the expense line, under five sixty dot six four meeting, conference and training fees, twenty twenty one adopted is two thousand five hundred, twenty twenty two requested is ten thousand. Uh, it's a three hundred percent change. Uh, the increase is due to hazmat classes and conferences resuming to pre-COVID status. Um, we use this hazmat account as we can. It's a restricted account, but we use this to offset our one hundred budget. So it's very important, if we could put more money into those lines, um, then it helps us to use less of the general fund, uh, money.
Mr. McGinnity, if I could?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you. Uh, Lucy, could you just look, speak to the, uh, in our budget, it shows the, uh, uh, your, your expense, let me just find it here, so I don't give you the wrong number. It says your expense totals in the proposed budget is supposed to be two hundred and eighty one thousand, six eighty three. But on that, uh, sheet that you provided for us, it's a different number. It's a hundred and something, I believe. Mill.
Under the one hundred account, Mr. Griffin?
Mr. Griffin, the other county you're speaking about? Mr. Griffin, it appears that you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McGinnity. Uh, fifty two, I'm looking at the, uh, forty two ninety one in the budget. Uh, it says expense totals two eighty one, six eighty three. As the, uh, expense totals, yet your, your sheet that you provided for shows one eighty five, four ninety six. So I might, I must be missing something along the way.
I think it was just an error. The, the expenses are two eighty one, six eighty three.
That is the correct number. So your, your worksheet's probably not correct. And is that right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Very good. I, I, I probably, it was probably a typo on the worksheet, but just so the, just so the budget's correct is what I wanna make sure of.
Yes, the budget numbers are correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much for clarifying.
Miss Morgan, you have another, uh?
I, I do. The four seventy account, this one's our easiest one. Uh, this is a grant that we receive for the Radiation Emergency Response Fund and twenty twenty one adopted revenue is forty nine thousand, eighty dollars. The twenty twenty two proposed revenue is forty five thousand, seven fifty four. The twenty twenty one adopted expenses are forty nine thousand, eighty dollars. And the twenty two proposed expenses are forty five thousand, seven fifty four. This is a grant that comes right in and has to go right out. We give fifteen hundred dollars per the nineteen municipalities, um, that are in the ten mile radius of the power plant so that they, they could upgrade their, um, radiation, um, response. Um, the change, there's, there's no position counts in that budget. The change is, uh, under the line item four seventy dot fifty dot four two nine one dot four three five dot one four. So the twenty twenty one adopted is forty nine thousand dollars, eighty. And the twenty twenty two requested is forty five, seven fifty four, a change of six point five percent. I know it doesn't mean the ten percent or ten thousand, but again, I just wanted to make note that it's nothing that we did here um, at EMA. This is just a formula that they use, um, Pima. So there is a decrease in, in the grant funding that we'll get, but it's, it's to know, um, nothing that we did here at EMA.
Thank you. So now, now can we go to Roden Bridge?
Yes, thank you, Lucy. Uh, I'd like to once again bring up Larry's question. We'll go through both our Roden Bridge and engineering funds respectively.
Uh, hello again. Uh, I'm responsible for eleven funds, uh, two of which are general funds. And I will go over them in great detail, um, currently. Uh, first one is the thirty four ten, the Roden Bridge Department. Uh, there is no increase in adopted revenue in twenty twenty one to the proposed revenue in twenty twenty two. An average, uh, even dollar amount of about eighteen thousand, five hundred, which, uh, fluctuates from year to year, but that's probably a good average. The twenty twenty one adopted expenses are one million, two hundred and ninety one thousand, nine hundred and twenty eight dollars. Uh, with an increase, the proposed expenses are twenty twenty two to a one million, four hundred and eighty four thousand, five point nine. Uh, non-represented employees consist of the division head, our executive secretary and our road and bridge supervisor, which is three. No increases for twenty twenty two. Uh, as for representative, we have seventeen positions, uh, in twenty twenty one and we will ask for seventeen in twenty twenty two with five currently not filled. The expenses, uh, there are a few increases, in particular, five fifty point five zero, the repair and maintenance of roads. I'm asking additional, uh, hundred thousand dollars, making the twenty twenty two request for two hundred thousand. Uh, just because of the need for, uh, phone calls from residents, uh, with drainage issues and problems and road repair has increased over the years and, uh, we just desperate for some additional funds in that particular item. Uh, another increase would be the five fifty seventy two, which is vehicles and maintenance. We have, uh, the hundred and sixty nine current vehicles that we maintain and, uh, we're asking for an additional, uh, four thousand dollars to a total of thirty thousand dollars. The last item is five fifty forty, which is the gas expense, uh, to utilities for, uh, I believe, uh, twenty twenty was taken out of liquid fuels. We had paid our district sheds, uh, out of liquid fuels and, uh, now we're trying to, we're gonna pay it out of the general fund. It was never changed for whatever reason in twenty twenty two. That's why the number is so much higher. It's nine thousand. And that would be general fund paying for all the utilities and all the sheds and our engineering and warehouse off. Uh, going into the next fund would be the forty three fifteen, which would be engineering. Um, our revenue consists of, uh, SALDO reviews and, uh, we have seen an increase in the amount of SALDO reviews. So we've increased the, uh, revenue for that item to forty five thousand for twenty twenty two. It is a modest increase in proposed expenses, uh, from twenty twenty one to a total of eight, eight hundred and forty thousand and eighteen dollars. Uh, non-representative, we have four, uh, engineers, uh, including myself, uh, William McIntosh, uh, and two staff engineers. Uh, the merit increase, uh, would be six thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, as you can see, we did the, uh, revenue increase, uh, for four oh five point three two, from forty thousand to forty five thousand, twenty twenty two. And, uh, we're asking for additional expense in, uh, five sixty sixty four for meetings, conferences, trainings. That is a need, uh, due to our MS four permit requirement for, uh, training each year. Into the entire staff, uh, we need to get trained for, uh, the visual, uh, legal respect, uh, outfalls for the MS four permit. The other funds I'm currently responsible for include, uh, the two hundred fund, which is liquid fuels. Basically, uh, two payments per year of around somewhere between four hundred and five hundred thousand. Going to that fund, so whatever we get, we spend to wash and most of the time that money is chewed up between, uh, winter maintenance, path repair, um, drainage issues, uh, highway lighting, uh, salt, anti-skid, uh, you name it. Anything that's we can pay for out of there for road and bridge maintenance, it comes out there for most part. We usually try to do some base repair on major roadways and bigger, bigger projects come out of that fund and also our. And also our matching grant money. We go for a grant for road and it's 70 or 80% is the grant. We've got about 20 or 30% has to come out of that fund usually. The other, the next fund would be the 201 fund, the Act 44. That's for distressed bridges only, don't use it for bridges that are under distress. We get one team a year of $150,000. We can save it up and use it, but most of the time that's chewed up on our small bridge projects that I talked about earlier. Some of that also carried over to the following year. The next fund is the 202 fund, which is aid to bridges and roads and bridges. That's a PennDOT reimbursable fund. Currently, right now, we have a, if we receive a multimodal grant or a reimbursable agreement for a design of a road or a bridge, it comes out of there also. In the past, Chase Road, anything from the MPO through PennDOT, our money we get from there is taken into there. So the money comes in and it goes right back out to pay the contractor. And this time, we have, Hillside Road Bridge is currently going to be taken out of there for design and construction. And also, the money is coming from the $2 million match we're getting from PennDOT is being thrown into that account. And then we pay it, we ask for reimbursement, and they pay us and it goes through there. The next fund is the 205 fund, that is Act 13. That's for bridges, has a different requirement as the, as opposed to the Act 44. These bridges have to be approved by PennDOT and sent and done through the ECMS system. We get one allocation a year, anywhere about 400,000, depending. In the past, I had saved this up, and we managed to replace currently three trust bridges, which cost anywhere between a million and a million five to do. You're down to our last, they got, just recently got our allocation in August, and we're down to our last structure, which is the Walt Road Bridge. That's currently been completed. We're looking to replace another bridge with that money that's kind of approved from off the Harris Hill Road Bridge up in Kingston Township. The next fund is the 206 fund. It's another Act 13, but that's the Marcella Shea we use for the rec, Department of River Commons work for maintenance and other items. We did a trucking and wall cleaning through that this past summer. We also got all the grasses, all the landscaping redone. We get one allocation a year out of that one, about 250,000, fluctuates to, it has been less this past year. The next fund is the 208 fund, the Energy Savings Bond that we took out a couple of years ago. Currently, and that's almost completed with use of the funds. We use the remaining funds that were left over for the courthouse window replacement and the highway lighting replacement on the North Cross Valley and other areas. The next fund would be the 210 fund, the local use fee. We have received roughly last year, our next allocation is just received regarding it, which is about 833,000. We'll get it in December. For most, we collect about 1.4 million on that per year. And out of the three bridges we're responsible for, we have currently used, two of them are just about complete, and we have one more to go soon with the permits come in. So we should receive another allocation in June, even though the program supposedly ends in December. The next fund is the 211 fund. It is set up for the community block grant funding that we got from the Office of Senior Development. That has done over the past these 13 projects, two roads and a couple of bridges. And we have actually seen nine slated for next year. Five in a bundle going out in Union Township, going out this December, and the other four in Butler Township are going out in January or February. There's a lot of restrictions with that money, and it has to be federally set up with the specs and modifications and approved, and also cleared by historic and environmental. So all that money that we get, that's a reimbursable fund right now. So I submit for payment, and then Office of Development pays me back into that fund, and we pay the contractor. The last fund I'm responsible for is the 350 fund, that's the airport fund. There is a modest revenue from lease and gas sales, which, all of which goes back into a match that we need for any grants that we receive from the airport currently. We received several grants over the last season, one for apron repair, we're doing taxiway repair. We also got a fuel system for the, the one gas system done. That's under construction currently, waiting on some parts, but the rest of them, which will be joined currently. And so that's where all that money goes, and that's where it comes out of, no general fund money that year. Oh, also, then we have the 194 fund, which is the bond, capital bond fund. And that, we only had a couple of projects over the last two years. I think it was only two in 2021, and there's only two or three in 2022. So that's where that money is being used from. It's just, there's not much left, and we keep adding to it. So hopefully, that will continue. We can get some other projects completed as an e, as increase for our aging building. Is there any questions at this time?
Questions?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, Ms. Griffith.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Flesch, could you speak to a couple, a couple items in your budget under 510.20, which is wages represented? You had budgeted in 2021, 569,000, 052. And then you, you did a budget amendment of more than 100, 120,000 out of that account. And, and now you're asking for the same amount for 2022. Could you speak to why you need 560,000 when you only needed 460,000 this year?
Well, that's for our vacancies. We have, most of the year, we were short personnel, basically, so just recently got another hire.
How many vacancies are you currently sitting on yet?
Four.
So 400, four, four positions, so your, your budget right now is 460, because you, you didn't, you didn't fill those four positions. So you basically transferred that money out and used it somewhere else. So you're anticipating filling those positions next year?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. And, and if I could go down and ask you on the one for the 169 vehicles, I forget what the line item is. I think it's, what, what line item do you use for your vehicle maintenance that you just went up there? 5, 550.72? You have $30,000 budgeted in 2022. Is that just for parts, or is that the, the actual labor to put the parts on, or the people to fix those cars? Or is that just parts?
Primarily, that's, that's parts and or, we have to take our vehicles out to have emissions inspected done, so that's done someplace else. So that's primarily much part.
Okay, so, so you actually, I mean, the, the 30,000 is just for the parts that are required. So the labor's out, where does that, does that come under other contractual services when you pay McCarthy and all them?
No, the labor is for two hired mechanics to our road and bridge.
Okay, so the 30,000 for McCarthy and Jack Williams and all those places, that all comes out of that fund?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so 30,000, because you don't have any technicians there to fix cars anymore, correct?
Yes.
There's nobody there fixing cars now like they used to?
Oh, yeah, there's two.
Oh, you, you have two technicians there, okay. I wasn't sure if you eliminated that altogether or not. All right, that is, very good. That explains that for me, I appreciate that explanation. Under other contractual services, 550.15, you have 108,000 budgeted for 2021. And you reduced it to 100,000, but you didn't use any money all the way through. What, what is other, under other contractual services that you needed to put that money back in in 21? Because you, you didn't budget anything, and you didn't budget anything in 1920, but you did budget 21. You amended a budget, you put 108,000 in there. Council never approved the 108, but you, you transferred money in there. So what did you need 108,000 for?
Well, with the lack of personnel and the vacancies that we had, we had a lot of road repairs and damage. We needed to, the funds to offset the manpower that we didn't have.
Oh, okay, so that was when you outsourced stuff that you had to do because you had a lack of staff, so you had to use 108,000 there, right? Okay, very, very good. All right, I, I think, I'm pretty sure, Mr. McGinley, I think that's the only question I have on my sheet here. Let me see, general?
Okay, if I have others, email them, we'll get answers.
Yeah, the, the last one, the last one I had was 599.13, which is general construction contracts. You budgeted 145,000, and then you didn't budget anything in 2022. Did you, is there a reason you don't have any money budgeted there? Yeah, it's 599.13 is the number on the line item.
For that line, we got a check, and then we paid the project out for the intermodal project.
So that's not something they're going to need next year?
No.
No.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you so much. Thanks, Mr. McGinley.
Okay. All right.
One more accounted like.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one comment to Mr. Griffith's question. In the road and bridge budget, we have two accounts that we, we take care of vehicle maintenance under. One is parts, which is 540.28. The other is repairs and maintenance to vehicles. The parts is solely for parts purchases. The repairs and maintenance to vehicles, that would cover the expenses for services that are provided by outside parties such as McCarthy.
Right, so you're actually budgeting $90,000 to take care of cars?
That's correct. I wanted to make sure that you were, that we understood that those two combined take care of the repairs.
Thank you.
And the manhattan labor, of course, comes out of our wages for road and bridge.
Good, thank you. We're now.
Last up, I'd like to.
Mr. O'Neill. Now open for members of the public.
And Mr. O'Neill, has somebody else he wanted?
One second, please. We're now open for members of the public. Anyone from the public who would like to address counsel at this time?
Mr. McGinley, Jason Carr from Salishburg, Pennsylvania.
Go ahead, Mr. Carr.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, I was just inquiring as if, has the county manager, interim county manager, through the budget process, considered at all using the CARES Act funding for any losses of revenue that the county has experienced since the pandemic started? As an example, the city of Wilkes-Barre just dropped a bombshell on the citizens that they're using $1.8 million of the CARES Act funding, which they explained as in the federal guidelines, there being language that enables them to do so, to use money, cause, use money from the federal CARES Act for any shortfalls in a budget when or where they experienced losses of revenue. That's just a general question, if possibly she could answer that. Is that an option in this, in this year's budget for the county? Secondly, I just wanted to say. Okay. Or the, the new money coming from the federal government, I know you got around to technicality, I have so many things going. But the new money that's been allocated, that you and Mr. Haas are fighting about how to spend it. I guess, secondly, I just wanted to say, the, the janitorial services at the courthouse are impeccable. I used the, the men's restroom last week, it, it was perfect. I think janitorial staff at the courthouse does a great job. I used to own one of the larger janitorial companies in the tri-state area of New York, excuse me, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and New York, yeah, I should say. And they do a great job. They probably get no recognition, but I notice it, and they do a fantastic job. Thirdly, I just wanted to say that the riverfront park may, some of the council persons may have noticed there's graffiti throughout the park on some of the signs. I gave the mayor of Wilkes-Barre and Councilman Tony Brooks approximately a month to try to remedy the graffiti, which is a bad impression, not only for the county but for the city. I made it public, I sent emails to them, they just weren't capable of getting it done. I can report to you tonight that I was able to get a commitment from a gentleman who I met at the, the Wilkes-Barre City Council meeting tonight, from Wilkes University, Mike Wood. He said he would make contact with various departments, excuse me, entities within the city, specifically the Diamond City Partnership, that will remediate the graffiti on the riverfront parks there on River Street. So, and lastly, I would just like to say, God bless President Donald Trump. Thank you so much.
Other members of the public?
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
All right, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. With respect to what was presented by the corrections, by the Corrections Division ad last week about the roof, the leaking roof, lower portion, if Mr. Flesch is still on and Mr. O'Neill, or if Mr. O'Neill can answer it. Was the roof, the lower portion of the roof inspected while the upper portion of the roof on the prison was being replaced? And if so, who did the inspection? If not, if the roof was not inspected when the upper portion of the roof was replaced, then was the, I would like to know if the roof was inspected prior to the corrections staff noticing the leak? That, that would be a great question, or a great answer to find out, because, I mean, somebody would have had to notice if they did the inspection prior to the corrections staff noticing the lower portion of the roof leaking. Also, I would like to know as far as the road and bridge, because I spoke to Mr. O'Neill a few years ago before the pandemic, you know, a year before the pandemic, with regards to wages for heavy equipment and crane operators. I believe, Mr. McGinley, and members of council that were there at the time, with respect to what the pay, you know, what the pay would be for, you know, for county, for the projects, capital projects on behalf of the county, what would be utilized, whether it would be represented or nonrepresented equipment operators. So I think that need, that issue needs to be revisited, especially now when it comes to these road and bridge projects. And I would like, like to add to the African County Manager's prior contribution, she missed out a very important point, which is quality of life. Without quality of life, economic development means nothing, because you're not going to get the economic, you're not going to get any people to move here that are talented and capable to want to move here if there's zero quality of life. Other questions I have, Mr. Chairman, I will forward them to you and the members of council, so you can get me the answers. Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving.
Other members of the public? Anyone else?
Yeah, one. I'd just like to address Mr. McIntosh and the staff of janitorial people and the custodian, men and women, to explain what they do during the course of the year. And I've never met one of them that didn't greet you with a smile, and they worked their rear ends off up here. And they're just such good people that we have here. And again, just going through the position budget, out of 16 people, I see 11 out of the 16 are making 22 or 23,000 dollars. Again, have a happy Thanksgiving, and thank you, everybody, for the custodial job when you still resigned county.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, before we adjourn, could you tell us what the outline is for November 30th meeting on the budget amendments? So all council members know what we're obligated to bring?
It's been on the schedule since the beginning, Mr. Griffith, but we have, any, any amendment that has been submitted will be on the agenda. It'll be presented, and the council will have a chance to weigh in on each and every amendment.
So when do we have to get them to, to, to Sharon, so that you can get them in the agenda?
The agenda will be out tomorrow before the close of business.
So it gives us less than 24 hours to get the amendments, do you?
Well, we have a holiday, Mr. Griffith. Well, we have a holiday, Mr. Griffin. Thursday, Friday, unfortunately, that are, we are closed for business, and that's the, I think everybody knows that we're having Thanksgiving this week.
Yeah, I, I know that, but I just didn't know we were supposed to get them in. All right, we'll get them in.
Yep, okay. Motion for German. Second, Ms. Howke and Mr. Sneal, favor, take by saying aye. Any opposition, abstentions, and nonpartisan carries?